I'm going to use my imitation hand as a gavel. I call today's Planning Commission meeting to order. Today's invocation will be provided by Mr. Shelton and alleged allegiance by Ms. Barnes.
May I ask you, President? Almost President, Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity of this similar season to carry out the business of the county, provide us the wisdom guidance to carry out those duties that we need to protect our public. We ask you to provide a special blessing to our county, our Commonwealth, and our nation. This we ask you most holy name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Ms. Barnes, Ms. Hall, would you please go roll?
Yes. Chairman Appicello?
Here.
Vice Chairman Shelton?
Present.
Commissioner Caldwell, present. Commissioner Barnes?
Here.
Commissioner Bratton?
Present.
Commissioner Sellers?
Here.
She is. They just called her name. Commissioner Evans? Not here. Okay. Chairman, we have a question.
Great. Are there any declarations of disqualification? All right, seeing none, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move item number five before item one, right before item one, as it relates to the time limits of item one.
So we're going to do public presentations first and then?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, the moment everyone has been waiting for. I'll now open the public presentation portion of today's meeting. Public may have up to three minutes to comment on any matter, except the one public hearing item on today's agenda. There'll be a separate comment period for that item when it comes up. This is not an interactive conversation. Before starting your comments, please state your name and address. The clock starts when the green light appears. Where's the green light? Kelsey's got it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yay.
We'll let you know when there's one minute left, and Kelsey will let you know when your time is up. So you have speaker cards. I'll ask everyone to line up in groups of five. When I call your name, please come forward, and then you can have an opportunity to speak. If you haven't filled out a speaker card, I'll let you go at the end of the public comment period. So I've got my first five. Jeff Eastland, Elena Procos, I apologize if I butcher your name, Hank Sharpenberg, Carrie Sobolik, and Connie Barrow.
Is this on? No?
Yes.
Okay. Always did like batting first. Jeff Eastland, Rock Hill. Last month, there was a town hall organized by the Board Chairman Diggs, which most of you know of. There's a few of us, some of us were here, a few of us. And I posed a question at that meeting, which was a question that couldn't be answered, but I thought it needed to be thrown out there. And I'm going to reiterate it here, just to put things in a little bit of context, if I may. So I'm going to make a quick point and a quick question. We have a relatively small county of 280 square miles. We have 168,000 people. We are, out of 95 Virginia counties, we are the seventh most densely populated in Virginia, trailing only the counties of Arlington, Fairfax, Loudon, Prince William, Henrico, and York. Now, it's projected that we will receive another 111,000 residents by 2040. That's only 15 years. They're estimated to need an additional 45,000 houses. So after you pause and consider the extra electrical and water strain on that kind of development, given what we're at here with these data centers, the question was, how do you countenance that? In other words, how do you shoehorn, which is the term I used, how do you shoehorn these big monstrous data centers into this county? There was a presentation at a board meeting earlier this summer, very interesting presentation from some housing folks. They proposed affordable housing within communities walking distance to stores and amenities. It's a pretty interesting presentation. They offered a map of where this affordable housing could be, and it was pretty much the central area of the county, which is where many, not all, but many of the proposed data centers are. So again, the question is, how do you shoehorn these data centers in with everything else that's already there and proposed to go there? And it just doesn't seem that the metrics work. I mean, the numbers just, they just don't work. I'm not saying I have the answers, but I think it's definitely a point where you need to reevaluate and defer and deny. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Hank Sharpenberg from the Acquahia District. I think it was at the last Board of Supervisors meeting that the topic of the subcommittee came up. And one of the supervisors was somewhat dismissive of that, saying that, well, they were all appointed by one person, implying that there wasn't going to be open fair or anything else like that. As Commissioner Barnes pointed out, the data center subcommittee was empowered by a majority vote of the Board of Supervisors, and it was the Chairman of the Planning Commission's prerogative to appoint the members. And I have to tell you, sir, you did an incredible job. I have attended every meeting, either in person or virtually. Your members treated the citizens with respect. They listened to what they had to say. You put in an incredible amount of effort to educate yourselves on what is probably the most important mission facing the county for the foreseeable future. I wish every elected official did what you did. If that were the case, this county would be run efficiently, effectively, and the citizens would have a voice. I don't know what the outcome of this all will be, but I thank you for your incredible effort and a job well done.
Thank you, sir.
I am from the Hartwood District. I want to start with this one statement. We are the commodity right now. Data center developers want one thing: our location. They want the property along I-95 corridor. It's all in high demand, and what are they going to do for us? They want our land, and they want our resources. And there is plenty of money changing hands that guarantees that they will say whatever they think that you want to hear, as long as they can get our land and our resources. So let's make them work for it, because the reality is, is that they can afford it. And our resources, they're gone when they're gone. Since March 21st, I have spent countless hours reading and researching about the data center industry. It has consumed every spare moment I have had, and even some of my lunch breaks at school, but we will not, we'll not talk about that. As you listen to the changes that are proposed tonight, I hope that you can listen to your colleagues who were on the subcommittee, because, like Hank said, they were outstanding. I have never felt so heard, so respected, and like we were having a conversation at times. They went above and beyond. I have been reading and researching this since March 21st, and they had a very narrow window to digest all of this. They went above and beyond. So as you consider your next steps, I urge you, hold the line. Take the work of your colleagues seriously. Keep firm, clear regulations for these data center developers. They don't care. They have money involved. That's it. They don't live here. But above all, I want you to demand transparency, demand accountability, and remember that this is our county. This is our community, not theirs.
Thank you.
I'm Elena Procos, Rock Hill. I too would like to just reiterate or say again how appreciative I am of all the help and how you've listened to us, the time, the energy. The information seeking is obvious, and I'm just very impressed. I understand in so many ways how you all are between a rock and hard place. So, thank you, is all I can say. The 1,000-feet setback, I just have to keep mentioning that, and I know you've heard it before plenty of times. My driveway is 750 feet. It would be a data center about two-thirds down my driveway. You know, just try to, I mean, I know the reasons, because I've been to all these meetings too, of why we have to move it back to 500, but I was hoping that maybe we could lead the way in the 1,000-foot setback, and that would be different from all the other counties that are more quickly approving the data centers. Revenue. Approval of numerous applications is like making a deal with the devil, if you ask me. Okay? In the name of revenue, isn't four enough? I mean, we need, we all use our phones, but do, how many do we need? I think that's a question that we need to ask ourselves. How many do we need to help with the budget but not deteriorate the quality of life in Stafford County? The issue of water is just really disconcerting to me. Maybe I misunderstood this, and correct me at some point in time, Kristen, if I, if I did get this wrong. But I was horrified to hear that developers can say they will do one thing for water usage, and then, when they're in their application process, but then if they run out of water, the county has to provide it. I don't know. Anyway, I wish, that's really disconcerting to me. And then, as I drive around Stafford County, the deforestation, the tearing down of trees is just heartbreaking to me. I mean, we saw two houses being just demolished. We have to have regard for our natural habitats, our ecosystems, and our wildlife. That's our survival. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Connie Barrow, Rock Hill District. And I want to also say a big thank you to those of you on the subcommittee for the amazing number of hours and endurance and research that you have done. I know you've done this during hours that were supposed to be for family and other things, so thank you. I would like to reiterate my hope that we will do the 1,000-foot setbacks. More than a hope, I think that Stafford County has an opportunity to be a leader in this country and in this world. This is not tiddlywinks we're talking about. This is the most expensive industry that is right now on the horizon, and we are right now going to be dealing with whatever decisions are made here in the next few weeks and months for many, many years to come. As far as if there is a 500-foot setback, we're dealing with the concerns of noise, air pollution, light pollution, residential values, residential property values, and quality of life. There are two counties that have actually come up with 500 feet as a particular point of reference related to data center projects. First of all, you know Henrico County. They determined that 500-foot setback as a response to increasing concerns from residents about the proximity of data centers to homes. The buffer increase from their 200 feet to 500 feet was part of, part of their zoning changes, and is specifically to be a meaningful buffer to reduce noise, visual presence, and emissions near homes. That is specifically targeted from experience in Henrico County by their board. Also Loudon County, the place, the epicenter of data center projects. As of March 18th, they changed their approval process so that data centers within 500 feet of residential areas require, require, not may, require a special exception in any project submitted even before the February 12th, which most of those were grandfathered, or any of them were grandfathered, except those that were located within 500 feet, 500 feet of residential areas. That requires a particular exception process, which includes many more specific points, and not just, yes, you can be approved. So we, there are precedents in Virginia, and these are counties that have experiences. We are not experienced, and any time that I've ever lived, in a point in my life that I didn't have experience, I looked to others that have had experience. These are not small things. These are buildings. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I've got my next five here. Brian Hoog, Donald Squires, Brian Driscoll, Nancy Rauter, and Sally Knight. Is this just me? Thank you.
Hi, Bryce Hoog, Falmouth District. Never spoken in front of a commission before, so bear with me. My greatest concern with the data center applications that are currently in is the fact that only one, that's already been approved, comes from an end user of the space that's being dedicated to become a data center. That's AWS at Potomac Church. All the rest are being applied for by real estate speculators, essentially. So they're, as you already know, they're middlemen that are just going to sell the land and the permit, or the ability to build a data center to a end user of the space. So you can't necessarily trust exactly what they're going to, or what they're saying in their applications. For instance, the Stafford Technology Campus, from what public records I could find, that land was acquired for the mid-double-digit millions, but was sold to STACK after it got rezoned for $302 million. So there is a lot of money to be made just in getting the rezoning, and then selling it on to somebody who's going to develop the space. So the promises made during the rezoning process and during the rezoning application, how can you trust that those promises are going to be upheld when the people applying for that rezoning are not the people who are going to be building the data centers? I'm not against data centers at all, but the companies that are building data centers are looking at them as an investment. They want to be here in Stafford County for long periods of time. You know, they're not building a whole data center to throw it away next year, so they want to keep everybody happy. We should be negotiating with the companies that have a vested interest in Stafford County in creating something with us. We shouldn't be negotiating with people who are just going to sell the land and, and sell the rezoned land for $302 million and make off with their money. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Donald Squires, Hartwood District. Ground zero for the data center campus, L. One Kelsey Road. It's already ugly what they've done to our road. Just a side effect. I want to start off, this subcommittee's been very different than our experience with the Board of Supervisors. Not once have I walked away from a meeting or been involved with any of our other meetings, and we have many of them, that have nothing to do with the government. I've never heard anyone say the Planning Commission doesn't care. Some of them are arrogant. They're not listening to us. They're smug. They know it all. No one's ever said that about this group. I'm going to leave it at that, because it doesn't happen with the other group. So you guys have actually been a model of how local government should interact with the public. That being said, I cannot believe that we can come in here and talk about all of the dangers and consequences of data centers to the public, whether it's e-waste, or water issues, us running out of well water, or the low-frequency noise situation. Low-frequency noise travels for up to three miles. Low-frequency noise doesn't care about a 500-foot setback, or a 1,000-foot setback, or a 5,000-foot setback, or a 10,000-foot setback. It goes up to three miles, period. That's not some scuttlebutt heard on the internet, which the Board of Supervisors has gone out of their way to tell us. We just hear this stuff from social media. No, we are working our butts off. I'm doing the same thing as the last person who spoke, actually several people have spoken to, how hard we're working to be informed and to inform you. And that all being said, I know I've listed, I've listed many of the dangers and consequences and some of the things I've talked about. And all I've heard the Board of Supervisors talk about is the impact on 15 or handful of developers, I think 15 was actually used, not the 170,000 citizens of Stafford County. Somehow, these developers are more important to the Board of Supervisors. They have gone on record as being concerned about the poor developers with the seven-and-eight-figure bank accounts, digit bank accounts that we don't have, but we're working harder than they're working. I can't believe that we're even willing to take a chance to harm people in this county, children in this county, water in this county, wildlife in this county, to make a buck. I have more to say on the next one.
Thank you, sir.
When do I get my other three minutes? I'm serious. I signed up for two, three minutes.
Yes, sir, it doesn't work that way.
They told me.
It doesn't work that way.
If there's another public hearing, if there's another public hearing, there's going to be a problem.
I'm not.
My name is Sally Knight, and I live in the George Washington District. This issue just came to my attention a few days ago from a flyer that was put in my mailbox. And I attended a informational session last night, and it really struck a chord with me. I moved to Stafford County in 1992 to get away from the congestion of northern Virginia around the DC area. And over the 30-plus years that I've lived here, the congestion, noise, traffic, air pollution has followed me down here. And now I realize I have to worry about the threat of these numerous, large, immense data centers, some of which have been approved already, some of which are being proposed. Several of these are close to our endangered river, the Rappahannock River. I worry about losing more land, forest, the wildlife. The degradation to the environment is going to be ongoing, and it's not something we can put back. It'll be gone. And is this really what the county wants, to bring in these large, huge data centers? It's, you know, all about money for the big companies. It's going to put huge pressure on our water resources, our electricity consumption, and the likelihood is that a lot of those costs will be borne by the residents of the county. So I don't have a lot of details. I don't have a lot of information I can put in, but I wanted to stand up because I am concerned. I really don't like the thought of living within three miles of one of these massive, one of the largest, I think, that's proposed, that's going to be so close. I like the quiet that I have. I don't want to worry about noise pollution and the health of the kids in the area. I just hope that you will really look at this really carefully before making a decision and make sure we're not giving away too much to these companies that they don't care. They just want to find a place where they can get the best deal.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Driscoll. I live in the George Washington District. This is my first time ever attending, speaking at a government meeting. I never thought I'd have to, but learning after these mega-campus of industrial-sized data centers, what looks to be planned out to be 31 buildings, nine super-electric-power substations are going to be built in my backyard, near our residential subdivisions in rural South Stafford County. And not only on that, on agricultural land that is proposed to be rezoned to heavy industrial has infuriated me, my family, my neighbors. I visited a few data centers on Monday, took off work, went up to Fairfax, Centerville, Manassas, stood outside of QTS, Iron Mountain, Digital Reality. To me, their setbacks look to be more than 1,000 feet from those residential areas. I've always understood to be setbacks that are so that my neighbor doesn't have to put their shed or pool right on my property lawn or by my house, meaning residential to residential. What I want to express is that extreme setbacks are needed for heavy industrial to residential and agricultural proximity, with no exceptions, variances, or waivers. Not against data centers, like most people. They should be going in places and spaces where manufacturing and industrial buildings already exist. I've seen and driven by what's happening to the land off Eskimo Hill Road. I'm a Yellowstone series fanatic. Never thought I'd be living, experiencing what happened in the story, and there's a good line in the last episode about setbacks, goes something like this, "Men cannot truly own wild land, free land." We are born from it. We live with it. We're nourished from it, and one day we'll return to it. That's a life's promise. For man to truly own land, they must rape it, bury it with concrete so thick, stack it with buildings so high that any existence of the land is erased. When I stood outside those data center buildings, I, I understood, I took pictures, that this land will become enslaved so that no one can ever enjoy it again. Those black industrial fences that outline those data centers, that land, it promised, it makes a promise, that land will never be free. No wildlife, the deer, will ever graze that land again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I've got my next five. Nancy Rauter, Kevin French, Karen Fox, Abby Carter, and Elaine Calendar. And if you're not in the room, and you can hear me, if you heard your name being called, please come to the ABC conference room. Sir, you can go ahead.
Kevin French, George Washington. I struggle with communicating the massive scale with which we are all dealing. And before I get into that, I want to preface all my comments by expressing my deep appreciation for the work that the subcommittee and the Planning Commission have done on this. I've been to many of the meetings and have been amazingly, I've been impressed with the depth of knowledge, the understanding of homework that the subcommittee has done, as well as staff, and it's, it's just, it's very, very impressive. Back to my comments. I struggle with understanding and being able to convey effectively the massive scale with which we're developing, with which we're working. The county currently has shown on their, in our documentation, about 37 million square feet of data center space. In the comprehensive plan currently, there is a number that says it's about $67 million of revenue per million square feet. I question that. I don't want to, I don't understand that number, and I'm not going to endorse it, but if you do the math, we're talking about nearly $700 million of annual revenue here. $700 million. That's a lot of money. That's, that's, that's almost double the current budget. If we were to have spent 1% If we were to have spent one percent of that on manpower, study, buying expert advice, we would have spent seven million dollars, one percent to invest in that. Instead, we have used the precious time of our Subcommittee and our county staff to attempt to make changes to the comprehensive plan and the amendments on the fly by borrowing from other municipalities what we think maybe their best practices might be. I've looked at the comprehensive plan modifications and the amendments and I would love to be able to say, I think there's been great progress made. And like your professor, I would say, good work so far, but it is incomplete. There's more. I wish we could see more in there. We're talking about thirty-seven million square feet, the numbers boggle, you can't convey that. And there are eighteen words dedicated in the comprehensive plan to light management. For thirty, for sixty-seven, for thirty-seven million square feet of data centers are mostly going to be living next to, next to a person who's living in that house. Imagine if a Walmart was put next to your house in a residential area with no notice and you wake up the next morning and there's a Walmart with its lights, sound, and effects and wonderfulness attendant. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Nancy Reader, Garrisonville District. I'm not sure, I think you said five people, so I ended up at the front of the line. First of all, I want to thank the Subcommittee, you did a great job. I commend them for what they did and all the different things that they addressed. They listened to us, they did a lot of homework, a lot of research, and I think they did a great job. I think they did the best they could, you know, I appreciate that very much, I hope that all of you will acknowledge that also. Our concerns were noise, the audible, and the low frequency, because we recognize those impact people not only immediately because of the loud, the humming, but also the low frequency can impact people's lives in that it can affect the nervous system. The light pollution, concerned about that, that it remains within their confines, the power lines and the power, the concern about the fact that we will be paying for that extra power, so I just, that's one of my concerns. And the destruction of sensitive areas, because we have areas in Stafford that are very valuable in terms of wildlife, and we keep that in mind. I'm concerned because if we reapprove all these, it would mean that we did a lot of rezoning, and that's very much away from the CP. And I think to do that means that we've kind of given up what our original plan is as to how we'd like Stafford to be. I am concerned about those people who are right next to it, it's not in my backyard, but it's close enough. And so I would just ask that we really appreciate that thousand-foot buffer, because it would make a huge difference in making it safe and comfortable for the people around them. And that three-hundred-foot buffer, including foliage, may plants if possible. How can we ensure the end use? That's my biggest concern. Because if they're developed or they say they're going to develop it and then they don't, and it's M2, they can literally put in anything they want. So I guess my concern too is, I don't know how you ensure that, but that would be something that would be important. The other is, I'm a little worried about like a bait and switch, I had that happen with flooring one time, it's not fun. The data center may send whether we're going to use potable water, and yet they find out once they're half-done that they don't have enough potable water in Stafford. So then are they, are we going to give them regular water and therefore impact the endangered Rappahannock River? If we see that all these data centers are developed, it means we become a one industry area. And if you do that, if anything happens to that data center, those data centers are there, become obsolete, that really impacts us because that income is not going to be there. So just another thing to think about. I'm real concerned about that grandfathering, because if we grandfather in, those that are coming in, your standards are set and when you do, and you did a good job on that. If they, if we allow others to come in that are below those standards, we really haven't accomplished anything. So I think it's important to keep that in mind. Data centers are for profit, they're for those people who are investors and they're working so that they can make money. We just love Stafford, we will live here. Okay? Thank you so much.
Hi, Karen Fox from the Hartwood District. You're not here to copy what Loudon, Fairfax, Prince William, Fredericksburg, or Henrico did. You're here to do what's best for Stafford County. And that means doing what's right for Stafford, not what's been done elsewhere, and certainly not what developers prefer. Now is the time to act boldly. We don't need more imitation, we need conviction. Just because a thousand-foot setback has become standard practice doesn't make it wrong. It just makes it forward-thinking, and it makes it protective, and it makes it ours. This isn't just about buffers, it's about who we are as a county. The residents of Stafford, the families, the small businesses, the people who actually live, work, and raise children here are asking for help. They're asking for planning that values their health, their property, and their future over quick tax revenue and corporate convenience. Let me be clear, doing the right thing, sorry, doing the right thing does, doing the right thing is rarely the easy thing. You have fears of litigation, you're told regulations scare off investment, you are pressured to water it all down, but fear is not a planning strategy. And if we are planning out a fear of being sued, we've already surrendered. A thousand-foot setback, stronger environmental protections, water usage accountability, and noise mitigation are not extreme, these are common sense. They're policies that protect Stafford's residents and allow us to attract development that fits our community. Clean industry, smart technology businesses, and businesses that don't just take, they give back. And let's not pretend proffers are protection. Proffers are promises not intended to be kept. They are revised, ignored, discarded, once the zoning is secured. And the only real protection is what you write into law before the approval, not after. Stafford has a chance to be better, not bigger, not faster, but smarter. I urge you to stop following and start leading. Stand up for this county, recommend the thousand-foot setback and changes that serve our county, not just the next data center developer. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Abby Carter, Falmouth District. I have a couple of things I'd like to say this evening. The first is, I understand that one of the approved data center campuses has asked to change their potable water proffer. This water, as water is one of the biggest concerns.
Sorry, time's up.
Go ahead. As water is one of the biggest concerns with data centers, any change made to a water proffer, and really any other proffer, sets a very dangerous precedent. With the number and size of the possible data centers here in Stafford, water needs to be treated like a valuable and rare commodity. Please do not open the door to this very slippery slope. Second, I've been attending the Subcommittee meetings addressing the performance standards for the data centers. The members have thoughtfully and vigorously made changes, but I'm very disappointed in the retraction of the setback distance from a thousand to five hundred feet. Given the known issues with data centers, a thousand-foot setback becomes critical to anyone who lives nearby. These centers will be used by the wealthiest companies in the world. They can be, they can be generous to the people and the other living beings who have to live near these campuses. If these centers are being built speculatively, it does not negate the need for a large setback, and five hundred feet is not enough. Finally, I want to tell you my experience with Stafford Technology Campus so far. I live at the corner of Potomac Run and Leland Roads. Since the deforestation of Eskimo Hill began, the number of big trucks has gone through the roof. We are awakened at 5:30 in the morning, not just by the usual sounds of our garbage trucks, but to log trucks and heavy dump trucks. There have been at least three log trucks that have either flipped over or gone in the ditch trying to make the turn onto Leland Road. There should be oversight of all these heavy trucks, they are noisy and dangerous on our small roads. I do hope you will reconsider reinstalling the thousand-foot setback and require data center developers use designated routes and rules for their big equipment that are appropriate for the seven-to-ten-year construction timeframe.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kallender, before you go, I'm going to ask for the next five people to line up. Jack Arthur, Jackie Arthur, Kim Lett, Amy Limbrick, Cade Hildreth, and Kevin French.
Good evening, Elaine Kallender of Falmouth. I've always been a big advocate of tree buffers along roadways. Why is it we have to look at every business or building or housing development a community has? Why can't we look at nature? Why can't building go on behind protective landscape barriers? It just has to be written into ordinances and honored. This is on my mind this evening, not just because your agenda is filled with data center items, but because I took a little trip through Virginia on Monday and Tuesday, hoping to cleanse my head and enjoy Virginia's beautiful scenery. That ended up being a mixed bag. It's a good thing I have a sense of humor. Laughter can be therapeutic also. Anyway, my husband and I decided on a two-hour drive to Harrisonburg in the Shenandoah Valley. I Googled a favorite hotel and saw pictures of mountains in the background. I thought that would be lovely, a little cooler there and a nice view, and generally we enjoyed scenic views on the ride out there. So we checked into the hotel, went to our room with the advertised panoramic view, and there it was, mountains in the background and big box stores in the foreground. Apparently Harrisonburg is a big box store capital of western Virginia. So I said to myself, well, no data centers to look at, that is good, and I like to shop, no problem. But then we discovered Harrisonburg also has a beautiful botanical garden at the university and a charming historic district. As we returned home along Route Three through a far corner of Spotsylvania, the highway was lined with mature trees. I thought, Virginia needs more of this. Then we entered retail alley, endless commercial establishments, all competing with each other for our attention. So I'm here renewing my campaign for tree buffers and extra, extra wide ones around data centers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Amy Limbrick, my address is 544 McCarty Road. My husband and I have owned our home at this address for twenty-five years. Our end of McCarty Road is about three hundred feet from Forest Lane. So while I have concerns in general about data centers, I am here specifically to speak against the proposed rezoning of agricultural land to industrial for the data centers in our district. We have watched the George Washington District change as Stafford has grown. We are accustomed to seeing plots of land used for new homes. If we don't own the land, we realize that there can be changes along the way, that's normal. However, the idea of a data center in our area is preposterous. This portion of land is one of the few remaining large sections of agricultural property in our district. Not only will our quality of life most definitely be affected by light pollution, most of our roads don't even have street lamps, potential well-water issues, noise pollution, and electricity cost and strains, not to mention potential property values decreasing for those who want to sell their homes in the future. Our wildlife and waterways most definitely will also be harmed. One glance at the map and it's obvious that the Rappahannock River will definitely be impacted. No amount of regulations can prevent the fact that there will be unfortunate damage done. If the land zoning changes to industrial, there will be no going back. It will be physically and aesthetically tainted for years on end. The Board of Supervisors said that Stafford needs more funds, but there are other options and the board can do better than this. The George Washington District may not have the most population, but our history in the county, the surrounding area, and even in the United States of America, as evidenced by its name of George Washington, is rich. Do not change our agricultural landscape as a quick economic fix that will have a significant and negative impact on our community at large. What will you do for this? What, if any at all, benefit will this have? Thank you for the time that you've put into researching this and thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Jackie Arthur, I'm from the Falmouth District. Five hundred-foot setback, hmm, and it seems that to me, from what I understand, there needed to be a precedent for them to put a five hundred foot. They just couldn't decide for the good of the community and good of everyone, a thousand would be better. That's my understanding. And so I'm wondering, since when does Stafford County have to have a precedent to stand on? A thousand-foot setback, the whole idea behind that is, from the site, the setback, from the actual property line, the first three hundred and sixty feet would be natural habitat, you know, the birds and the trees and wonderful things like that. And then the other seven hundred and forty would be possible roads that would be set within the data center, and maybe there'd be some generators there. But think of the low-frequency noise, which is going to be emitted from this, and also the light pollution, as well as, let me see, ah, the site height. So you have the site height of the data centers, you have the light pollution, and you have the noise, and at least the three hundred and sixty-foot natural barrier will negate some of that. Did you know it takes five thousand feet to equal one mile? Gee, I'm only, we're only asking for a thousand, that seems like a real pittance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Cade Hildreth, Hartwood. First, heavy industrial developments aren't compatible neighbors for families, so we're already compromising by talking about what the setback should be. We're trying to make an incompatible use compatible. And if you want to shorten the distance, I think that the way to do that is to require lower heights for those buildings that are just within that zone, that would be a logical way to do it. And please keep the buffer at three hundred. If you do decide to pull back the setback, you still in that five hundred feet have the ability to do a three hundred-foot setback, a buffer. I'm also here to express strong opposition to the proposed proffer amendment for the Potomac Church Technology Center. I usually like to read these.
Sir, it's not the appropriate time to talk about that. When that public hearing comes up, you can definitely provide your comments.
Okay. I will, can I speak to other topics and say that? Speak then. Can I speak again then?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I continue to be concerned about the low-frequency noise concerns of data centers, particularly their impact on schools and children in that proximity. And low-frequency noise, because of the long wavelength, also impacts infrastructure. So it can have an impact on our public infrastructure over time, meaning it can degrade bridges, walls, buildings, and pipes. And so I think we need to look more into what are the consequences of these developments on our public infrastructure and our maintenance costs. I'll save the other thoughts for later, but I urge you to be judicious and not look for what else is being done, but do what is ethically right around data center performance standards.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Kim Lett, I'm from the George Washington District. You've heard everybody's concerns about the data centers and the electricity and the water and the environment and the noise and so forth, so I'm not going to add any more to that. What I did want to ask or point out, and maybe this has been brought out and I haven't seen it, and if so, anybody can let me know, but there was an article in, that I pulled up from the City of Fredericksburg Free Press. the City of Fredericksburg Free Press, from the Fredericksburg Planning Commission, and they voted seven to zero to recommend disapproval of a data center off of Cowan Boulevard. Part of the reason for that was that their Vice Chair of Planning, Mr. Whitehead, noted that the physical footprint for the city, for the land, would be, let me read that thing. Planning Commission Vice Chair Carey noted, "A data center outside of the recently approved technology overlay district would increase the facility's physical footprint in the city from 3.8 of land to 5 point, to 5%." And he said, "In Fredericksburg, they in 2018 said they would have no more than 2% of the area in the city to be dedicated to data centers." So I don't know, is Stafford has a, something in their plans that says how much land is going to be dedicated to data centers? Is that in any of our plans? And going back on that, my question is, how much is too much? We talk about data centers, we need data centers. I use Facebook, I use, I'm using my phone right now. The question is, how much, where, and taking into the consideration of the other things. So I do think, I don't know what the end game is. I don't know when we're going to know too much is too much. I know Supervisor Diggs, who is our supervisor, has said, "Well, they haven't been approved. Nobody said all these applications are going to be approved, but we don't know they're not going to be approved." So, you know, I'd like to know what the end game is. On another topic, really quick, this meeting, the people downstairs can barely hear over that phone. There's room in this room, there's 49 chairs, that they could have been up here, knowing that we're going to, there's such a controversial topic being discussed, it would have been nice if the planning had taken into account the number of people that were going to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll just say, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there's a limit on the number of people who can be in this room for the fire marshal, and I think we're at that limit?
Yeah, 34 seats.
It says 49. Well, it says tables and chairs, so it's 34. Tables and chairs.
So, um-
Could have had a bigger room.
I have two more speaker cards, Kevin French and Kristin Maxon. I'm not sure they're in the room, but one of them-
As much as I'd like to speak again, I've already-
Oh, I, I-
Wait a second. Can I buy three minutes?
Uh, Ms. Maxon, if you'll make your way up. And in the meantime, if there's anybody else in the room who hasn't spoken and would like to speak, if you'll line up in groups of five, and I'll ask anybody who's not in the ABC conference room who would like to speak, if you'd line up outside the ABC conference room, and we'll call you up in groups of five.
I'll be real quick. Erin Sazaro, Hartwood District. I just want to point out, as we talk about the setbacks, I'm going to echo what everyone has said about reiterating the import of the 1,000 feet and the 500, and yeah, this fervent hope that we aren't sort of looking to everyone else to tell us what best practice is, what's good, what's protective, but that we are willing to set that precedent ourselves. And I think we can at least accede that there is a national trend that understands that we need stronger standards, that we're moving in that direction, not in Stafford, not in the Commonwealth, in every state and Commonwealth of the United States. So what I want to say specifically about the 500 and the 300 is just to remind everyone that our current zoning ordinances, 100 feet for the building itself and all the accessory infrastructure is between that 100 feet and the neighboring property line. So the shift to 500 and 300 would give the developers 200 feet more than, that would double what they currently have for all of that accessory use, and keeping all that accessory use thing, like drive aisles even, in that 200 feet. So I want to make sure we're all clear on that math. I'm seeing faces. So we're doubling the amount of space that they already have, so we're not hamstringing them with that 300. So I really want to fight for that 300 as well for those neighboring properties. I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Freeland? Freeland?
Yes, sir.
Did you go?
Yep.
George Washington District.
No is a good answer. And I offer this to you. You were likely given some very specific tasks about what to take a look at and then come back and make proposals. Got that? Good, and a lot of fine compliments. But I think an implicit task in that is to be able to take a look at things like what Mr. Esman was talking about, Jeff Esman there. What is the saturation point for the county? When is enough enough? You're looking to keep things into balance. Got that? But what is our saturation point? And when do we say enough? And I would like to ask that that type of thinking is in your calculus. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kristin Maxon, thank you for your consideration. July 16th of this year, the last data center planning commission and zoning hearing to figure out the ordinances. There was a question of the freedom of speech that the county will allow as it's, as it's changing with the artificial intelligence. The data centers is artificial intelligence and the change of behavior, and the people are concerned about it. They are showing up. Concerning non-disclosure, as the public has witnessed with the aftereffect of budget increase since March of 2023, and the big changes of planning and zoning has been witnessed by the public. Today's extension is related to June 11th, 2025. We have 36 future public hearings stacked up, and never before had we had that much. And in one day, we had 10 hearings. It was too much, and, and there was 1,000 or 1,500-page agendas placed before the public. It's too much. Will the commissioners be reasonable with the list and the information that the public has before us? This can be seen on page 296 of 406, June 22nd, 2025. The Planning and Zoning Code Directory has retired. Not a good timing with so many rezoning proposals coming forth. Stafford County impacts upon public, a project design is directed as 60% complete before it decides to show at public and have a public hearing. It should be given as soon as it's developed. See page 79 of 184, July 1st, 2025 packet. Having to follow what is in the agenda, data centers is just too large of a subject to confine the subject on the public level. The Board of Supervisors has stated, "We have been lied to because of it fit a political agenda when defining the 2026 budget work session." The day before the data center meeting of July 16th, 2025, new stated, new plans to build 10 large nuclear reactors in the U.S. was presented by a developer, but this could not be spoken of because of the freedom of speech issue. The data center's infrastructure has not been defined here in Stafford, and electrical grids neighboring Stafford County has been failing with the heat waves I've seen on the news. On July 11th, 2025-
Thank you, Ms. Maxon. Okay, is there anybody else? Thank you, sir. Yeah, anybody else in the room who would like to speak, who hasn't spoken?
Did you say we're doing a public?
No, we're, there's a public hearing later, and you'll have an opportunity to speak on that when it comes up.
I'll just speak off the cuff here. Has anybody seen this? This is put out by Bowler. These are the guys that are doing most of the construction in the data center for a lot of the land in Stafford County, and they have a plan, a data center development playbook. And I'm like, wow, who knows about this? It tells them here exactly what they're going to do. It's 28 pages. It's basically a webpage, or not webpage, but a PowerPoint of how they're going to do this, how they're going to come into a county and how they're going to develop these, these data centers. And it's pretty informative, especially if you, if you look at, and if you think of a couple military terms, shock and awe and blitzkrieg, you think, that's exactly what these guys are doing. So what their game plan is, and they kind of say it in so many words, is they're, they're depending on the county, and I'll, I'll read it right out of here, it says, "Many local, many local development codes lack clarity regarding data centers, which can be used for projects to impede the project progress. Still, there may be successful studies and, and it may, and may impede process and delay the, delay the development." So, you know, I say to us, what's our, what's our game plan? I mean, you guys have been working very diligently, and I really appreciate what you've done, but keep in mind, these guys have a game plan from, from ground zero. They have professional engineers, they have lawyers, they have geotechnical folks, they use a webpage or a website that can actually go in and look at how much ground needs to be moved in order to put a data center in a certain spot. They, they have, they, they address everything from geotechnical procedures to water to, to how much land they have to move. And it's quite impressive, is the 28 pages. This is what they give to their folks who are, this is what they pitched to their folks that they're trying to make their clients. So I just ask us is, hey, every good game has a game plan, and I hope we can develop one, and I don't feel like, I don't want you guys to rush into something and feel like, hey, we've got to come up with something because we're being rushed. So that's all I've got to say.
Sir, thank you, but before you leave, can you tell us your name and address?
Oh, J.W. Swain, George Washington District.
Thank you, sir.
Roger.
Okay, for anyone who's not in the room, this is the last call for public comment, so please come up to the ABC room if you'd like to comment on any item.
So first, I want to thank you all for your good work. It's not easy, you know, to have controversial things in front of you, but I live on Hollywood Farm Road and George Washington District, and, and I love that land, and that land is very spiritual, and I don't care how many feet things, these data centers would be from the road. It's just not the right land for them. It's too close to the river, we're all on wells. I know someone who works for Amazon who only checks people's wells for data centers. It's not, it's not a pretty picture. And I'm sure there's other land in Stafford, if you really want data centers for your resources, for the revenues, you could find something else, another place to put them. Please don't approve these requests. Thank you.
Thank you, and I also need your name and address.
Joan Limbrick. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Hollywood Farm Road.
All right, seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public comment period and move on to the first agenda item, which was number five, now number one. And that's the request for a time limit on the extension for the Potomac Church Tech Center proffer amendment.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Brian Gooch of Planning and Zoning Department. This item is a request for an extension to the time limit for the public hearing item on the agenda this evening for Potomac Church Tech Center. So Stafford County Code 28162G specifies a consideration of any zoning reclassification application, still pending beyond 12 months from the application date, may only be extended by written request of the applicant, subject to approval by the body considering the application. That's you all. The 12-month expiration for this application is going to be August 14th, so that's before the next board date, so that's why we needed to get this on the gen, the agenda this evening. The agent for the applicant, Charlie Payne, has submitted the extension request to February 13th, 2026. A reason for that date is the Planning Commission can essentially extend another six months. If it goes beyond 18 months, the board has to act on that. And they have been diligently pursuing the application. I'll take any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gooch. Are there any questions for staff? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to either recommend approval or deny?
Motion to extend the time extension.
Okay, there's been a motion made to approve the request by Mr. Shelton, seconded by Ms. Sellers, I think. Any further comments? Mr. Shelton?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Sellers?
No.
All right, do we need to do, how do we do this since we don't have our?
I imagine we'll call them.
Okay. I don't have a list of everybody. Mr. Shelton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
And myself, Mr. Appichelle, I vote aye, and Ms. Carey's. Thank you, everybody. All right, moving on to the next agenda item, which was Agenda Item 1, the Potomac Church Tech Center proffer.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Next item, as you stated, a proffer amendment request for Potomac Church Tech Center. Thank you, Mike, for working the slides for me. So you can advance. I'm just going to give a quick recap on what this project is and where we are. So this is a request to amend proper conditions relating to utility phasing, utility infrastructure and water use for Potomac Church Tech Center, tax map 3971A, consisting of roughly 50 acres in the Falmouth District. The applicant owner is Amazon Data Services, the agent is Charlie Payne. Here's the location of the site and zoning. It's the east side of Old Potomac Church Road, across from the intersection with South Campus Boulevard. The zoning is B2. It was rezoned to B2 in 2009 with proffers, and the proffers were amended in 2023 to allow for the data center use. And here's a photo of the site as of 9:30 this morning. As you can see, the project's moving along pretty quickly. They've got much of the first building complete. There's going to be a second building directly behind it. And here's the GDP from the rezoning. The actual development plan very closely matches this. And just a quick recap on the proposed proffers. They would revise proffer 4A to reference revisions to the previously established Water Infrastructure Agreement, or WIA, and establish a timing of approval of the revised WIA. The revised, the next proffer to establish a limit to potable water usage of 217,000 gallons per day prior to the infrastructure completion date. The infrastructure completion date being the completion of the reuse line or, or purple pipe facilities to the Acquia Treatment Plant. The revised proffers would allow for an additional 113,000 gallons per day if, and that's split between both buildings. If certain criteria are met, number one, completion of the Centerport Booster Station, which will assemble, essentially put into play the water from Lake Mooney and 16-inch water main from Centerport Parkway to Route 1, and that additional water is available for use. Number two, the applicant completion of demolition at the Acquia wastewater treatment plant, which is necessary, they have to demolish certain facilities and relocate staff in order to build the reuse facilities on that site, and they have to complete at least 25% of the infrastructure improvements required for the reuse service. It also allows milestones to be modified if the county is delayed in vacating the storage yard at the Acquia Treatment Facility, and it would also require termination of potable water usage the earlier of 30 months following OP or occupancy permit for building number two or upon infrastructure completion date. And this change would remove the restriction requiring completion of the infrastructure prior to occupancy of the second building. And it would also add a proffer to assist the county in finding a temporary location for the, the Acquia wastewater treatment plant facilities that are being demolished and relocated. And there's a requirement to establish a future MOU with the county to that effect. Just a quick update, so this was considered at the June 11th Planning Commission meeting. Plan Commission voted to defer to the states. Reasons for deferral were inadequate time to fully review the latest proffers, so the applicant had submitted fairly substantive changes- applicant had submitted fairly substantive, uh, changes to the utilities proffers the day prior to the, um, the, uh, public hearing meeting. And to also, the Planning Commission also wanted to get a better understanding of how the proffers interact with the S T C proffers, as well as understand implications of adopting the amendments. And this says there have been no changes to the proffer statement since, but that's no longer accurate because we did just receive, uh, updates to the proffers. Just, just one section that was updated, and that's provided as a handout, you should have that, the proffer statement is dated today, July 23rd. And if you turn to...
Page nine.
Yes, so Utilities Section Proffer, that's four B, the end of four B, it says, "Not withstanding anything to the contrary under these amended proffers, in no event will a certificate of occupancy be issued for the second data center building constructed on the property until the applicant has obtained all certificate of occupancy permits to fully operate the first building constructed on the property." So, uh, to summarize, they have to fully occupy the first building before they start to occupy and have a potable water demand for the second building. Next slide, please. And, uh, just go over the utility analysis, uh, the developer has entered into a water infrastructure agreement with the county, which outlines their obligations. Currently, as I stated, occupancy for the second building is restricted until the reuse water is available. But the, this proffer amendment would remove that restriction, but at the same time establish, um, limitations for potable, potable water usage, as well as milestones that must be met for potable water to be used. Should this amendment be approved, the WIA will need to be updated. Utilities Department has reviewed the proposed proffers and provides a statement shown here, I'm not going to read it, but basically, uh, they have, they have a comfort level with the proposed proffers, they feel that, um, it does provide some additional assurances, but they would like to see some stronger language, um, particularly as it relates to their commitments to helping the county relocate from the Acquahia Treatment Plant. So bottom bullet, uh, utilities generally supportive of the proffer amendments, and again, uh, it believes, uh, further, um, refinements would be beneficial, and they hope to, to do that through the amended WIA and the future M O U that's referenced in the proposed proffers. Evaluation criteria, just wanted to do a refresher on this real quick, so County Code Section 28-206, um, lays out evaluation criteria for reclassifications, it talks about compliance with district requirements, and appropriate use of land, that the development is compatible with surrounding properties, and doesn't negatively impact property values, uh, has preservation of natural resources in mind, um, consistency with land use and other recommendations of the comp plan, and finally impacts the public facilities, including consideration and timing of public facility improvements and public cost of the development. So, since this is, uh, this was previously approved for a data center, the last bullet here is the most relevant to this proffer amendment request, and the Utilities Department believes that the additional milestones provided with the proffer amendment will help ensure there's sufficient water capacity to handle the applicant's request without negative impacts to service delivery for other businesses and residents. All right, uh, outline the positives, the proposed proffers would establish specific limitations on potable water usage, um, prior to the completion of the reuse lines, and the proffers would establish specific milestones to be completed to help ensure progress towards the reuse line completion. And we are not noting any negative aspects at this time. Our recommendation is for approval, as noted, the Utilities Department has reviewed and is generally supportive of the proffer amendment, um, but I will reiterate, they are also supportive of, uh, further refinements to the proffers that would strengthen some obligations. That concludes my presentation.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gooch. Questions for staff?
Can you go back to page eight, maybe you just summarized, I, I need to look at that again. There, that nice little highlighted section down there. So basically, you're saying this is good, but we need better? Is that what this is? I, I'm, you know, I'm just trying to really grasp.
So, I, I want to start off by saying I don't want to speak for utilities too much, but my understanding from talking to them is they, um, they do appreciate the additional commitments to ensure progress towards the reuse lines, that is definitely a positive, they do see an opportunity for further refinements, but, uh, we do have staff from Utilities present to help answer any utility-specific questions.
What's our draft idea on this one? I'm sure it's in here in this...
Do you add that mic?
When, when do we have?
We have, uh, September 19th.
And our September dates for our September meetings of, of this?
I think we have two meetings in September, I pick one as in the first half, I don't have in front of me.
Like the 18th, it could be one of them.
Wait, so you said September?
The 10th?
Yeah, September 13th.
And September 17th. No, no, sorry, sorry, September 10th, September 10th and 24th.
Okay, so, sounds like we've got some more. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, I'm going to ask for my colleague's indulgence, because I have some of the same concerns as that last bullet on that, uh, PowerPoint, uh, so if everyone will indulge me here. So, uh, and this, these, some of these questions might need to be answered by Utilities. Are the Acquahia Waste Water Treatment Plant improvements necessary for the county to provide reclaimed water to the applicant and stack?
Want to take this one?
Yeah.
And before I answer, could you define the improvements a little bit bet, what you mean by improvements a little bit better? Um, because there is some, the improvements as far as the construction of the Water Creek Reclamation Facility, but then, um, in order to have enough property to build that facility, we have to relocate part of our maintenance facility, so that is actually what that last bullet point is going to, it's relocation of our maintenance facility so they can build the water reclamation facility.
Okay, so my question was about the improvements necessary to provide both the applicant A W S and stack reclaimed water?
Yeah, they, in there, it's the construction of the water reclamation facility, um, is required along with associated piping, tanks, pumps, all of that.
Right. Does the current proffer package require 100% of these improvements to be completed before any potable water can be used by Building Two?
By Building, currently, yes, because currently Building Two has to connect to reclaimed water, so the reclaimed water facility would need to be constructed, the pipelines from the reclaimed water facility to the Potomac Church Center would need to be constructed as well.
Okay, what's the current deadline for the applicant to finish these, uh, wastewater treatment plant improvements? Again, associated with...
With that, it's May of 2027.
I'm sorry?
May of 2027.
Okay, so that's, uh, about two years from now.
Yeah, just a little bit less, yes.
Right. Um, if the applicant doesn't complete these improvements on time, then stack's required to complete them by December 2028, is that correct?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're supposed to assume the construction, uh, of the facility by 2028. I mean, I would be certain that if, you know, they're a month out, that's not going to happen, but if that, you know, uh, if that facility has not started, if construction has not started, they would, you know, you know, assume that, uh, in early 2028.
Okay, so it's not started, what if it's started and it's still not completed by May 2027?
I mean, I, I would assume if they are like a month or two out, um, just because they've had scheduled delays, they would probably finish the project because it would cause a greater delay in the overall project by having one contractor pick up and the other one start.
I get that, what if they're 30 or 40% into it, but they can't get it done by May 2027?
I think at that point in time, we would have to evaluate why they're only 30 to 40% along with the project.
Okay, but in any event, the deadline for stack is three and a half years from now.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Versus the 18 months, uh, A W S. Okay, is it also true that the revised proffers remove the 100% wastewater treatment plant completion requirement, and would allow the applicant to use 217,000 gallons per day for Building One, Building Two, or both buildings?
Yes, that's correct. Right now, the way it stands is, you know, and they cannot use all of the water needed for Building One, the way it's like currently worded, they can use up, only up to 217,000 gallons, so what the revised proffer does is it spreads it out over two buildings, so the same amount of water is used, it's just spread over two buildings.
Right.
And so the cap becomes, instead of the occupancy for Building Two, it's the total amount of water used for both of those buildings.
Gotcha. And, and does the, uh, proffer amendment allow the applicant to use an additional 113,000 gallons per day for a total of 330,000 gallons per day for use by both buildings with the, with certain conditions being met?
Yeah, it does, and it's pretty much, you know, geared towards, if you look at, I think, you know, Brian read those off, but it's geared towards milestones of the project, so I think the last one's like 25% completion, so they really are geared to getting the project completed, so if they're able to complete X amount into the project, I think in this case it's 25%, they do, uh, they are, you know, allowed to use, uh, some additional water, uh, before the reuse facility is, you know, completely completed, but that, they still would need extra water for their ultimate site.
Right. And are any of the infrastructure improvements mentioned in the conditions already required under existing proffers and, uh, water infrastructure agreements for the applicant and stack?
Yeah, as, as Brian was reading off is the first one, um, it is the, uh, Potomac Creek Pump Station, or the Potom, the Centerport Water Booster Station, and there's an associated pipeline, that's to move water from Lake Mooney North, uh, and to make sure that we have water for that area of Stafford Technology Campus and Potomac Creek, um, or Potomac Church, I'm sorry. So it's really, those were in the S T C Water Services Agreements, but the way that it's written in this proffer is if they construct it, or if, if this applicant constructs, whoever constructs it, it has to be complete one way, shape, or form.
Okay, so I think the answer is yes?
The answer is yes.
Okay. Am I correct that the condition only requires the applicant, in the proffer amendment, only requires the applicant to complete 25% of the wastewater treatment upgrades to get the additional water?
Yes.
All right, and if these proper conditions are met, including just that one quarter completion of the wastewater treatment plant improvements, can the applicant continue to use the 330,000 gallons per day past the May 2027 deadline?
Until the 30 months of the occupancy of the second building.
So again, that's a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
But there, yeah, there is a cutoff there.
Right. Did the, there was a June 3rd version of the proffer amendment that was posted with the June 11 meeting, and in that proffer amendment, at that point in time, the one that was posted, it provided that one half of the additional 113,000 gallons per day, which was 56,500 gallons per day, would be available when certain conditions were met, and then it provided another tranche, the remaining half of that 117,000, when other conditions were met. Do we know why that was taken out of the proffer amendment?
I'm not, I'm not sure why that was revised, uh, but to put some clarity to that, um, the last, so the total, the last 56,500 or the total of 113,000 gallons is at the same milestone as it is now, so actually, this is slightly more restrictive than what was in the June proffer amendment.
You're going to have to help me with that, because I'm not, I'm not tracking.
Okay.
So, there were, I don't know what the number was, because I don't have it in front of me, there were three, three, there were a total of five, I think, improvements that were supposed to occur.
Yeah, and there's always...
Two or three were in the first tranche, and the remainder were in the second tranche.
Okay, so there's always been, you know, kind of, I will say three steps, potable water improvements, groundbreaking of the reuse facility, 25% of the reuse facility. So the potable water improvements have always been, in both of them, something that has to be completed, we don't have the pot, we, we don't have the ability to get the potable water to that site without those improvements, so we wanted to make sure that those are done, so those kind of remain the same no matter what, those have to be done. In the original, back, going back to June the 11th, or whatever it was, is at groundbreaking, they would get half of the water, at 25% completion, they would get half of the water. Now, the way that it is worded, you have the same potable water improvements, groundbreaking, they don't get anything, they have to break ground and be at 25% to get the full amount, so they actually lose a milestone with the revision, and so they, it's actually not near as incremental as what it was before.
I, I got to say, this is all very confusing, it doesn't take much to confuse me.
Okay, it's not just me, thank you.
But, but I think, I, I think the change is actually more complicating in the sense that now all the applicant has to, so first of all, let me back up, in order for A W S and stack to operate their data centers, they need initially potable water as a bridging solution, and then they need, uh, reclaimed water after that bridging solution expires. We would do none of this were it not for the data center and its need for potable water and reclaimed water. And so all these improvements that we've talked about are driven by that need, right?
Except for the potable water improvements, those were part of our C I P, instead of the county constructing those, and I think it's about, uh, 20 to 30 million dollars worth of improvements along Centerport Parkway, instead of the county including those in our C I P, the data centers will now construct those.
And that's great, and I appreciate their generosity, but they still need that potable water to operate these facilities, that additional potable water, right? Okay. So I, I guess what I'm concerned about when I read the changes, is that the applicant now only has to do 25% completion of the reclaimed water facility in order to get this additional water.
Okay.
And we've dis, in my opinion, we've disincentivized them by only requiring 25%. So my question is, why do we not have another condition that says, sort of similar to what was originally proposed, you get your first, tw, first half of the water when all these conditions are met, the ones that are now in the proffer amendment, you get the additional water when you're further along in the process of completing that wastewater treatment plant, maybe 75%. Why, why don't we have a condition like that if the ultimate goal is to incentivize A W S to complete their project on time, not necessarily relying on stack to back them up?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that make more sense?
Well, that was going back to what the original pro, what the original conditions were, is where they're worded, break ground, start on the project, you get more 25%. I mean, going back to the one for Stafford Technology Campus, they're getting their first two buildings, um, at, at groundbreaking, 25% to keep that project moving. So, you know, really, we mirrored those two, um, I mean, the applicant is here, if they wanted to cha, you know, if you want to change that, I mean, I think they would be the one to ask if they wanted to change that to back to what it was, but have it to be at 25%, and then maybe at 50% for the second, you know, tranche of water.
Well, to me, that's more of an incentive than what's currently in place to move this project along as quickly as possible. Got, got a couple more questions. On Section C regarding the relocation support, going back to this bullet at the bottom, the provisions appear very vague to me. I'm trying to understand, for example, when it says the applicant will assist the county in finding a temporary location, how, what do we, what is that, and how will we know when that proffer has been met?
Okay.
What are the expectations?
And to give a little bit more background, and I think this is one, where having multiple documents does make it a little bit more difficult, you know, right now, you know, there was originally this pro, this rezoning was the first data center, Stafford Technology Campus was the second data center. So really, not support, but the financial funding for most, for all of that, for the relocation of the maintenance facility is part of that. So what we are asking for is actually, you know, that the same thing, uh, since the two groups are, you know, are somewhat working together, but for them to actually kind of secure a posi, a secure facility and have a new facility constructed. If for some reason this is not completed, we always have the fallback of what's already approved in the Stafford Technology Campus, uh, Water Infrastructure Agreement, where they are actually providing us 100% of the funding for pretty much that same scope of work. So we are double dipping on this one to make sure that between one of the two entities and the county, we're able to complete this project.
Okay, I, I get the, I get the fail-safe. Okay, I, I get the, I get the fail-safe. I still am reading the words here.
And this is, this becomes-
Again, they're, they're still vague. Again, I don't know what assist means. So what, what is the scope of assist?
And that's what-
And I'm not trying to be-
Yeah, and that's one of the, I mean, that's one of the reasons we said, you know, we're generally happy with, with, you know, with adding that language in there. We would prefer a little bit stronger language. But since we had the fail-safe, this was not in there before, you know, we were happy with it moving forward.
Okay, but back to Ms. Warren's point, we have a little bit of time here. In fact, we have a lot of time because we just provided a significant extension uh for this project. And I'm told we have the opportunity to do another extension, right? Is that what I heard you say? We, we can give them, was it Brian who said it? We can give them six months and then another six months?
Okay.
So, yeah, the, the planning commission time for action would still apply, right? E- even with the, the total, the, the total application deadline is the tw- is twelve months. Um, now extended to eighteen months.
Okay.
The planning commission's time for action is still the same as it would have been.
Yeah.
Okay.
November nineteenth.
Gotcha. But in any event, we still have another two months.
Yeah, and, and the other thing I'll say, the, the one thing I'd probably want to change in this bullet now after thinking about it, um, instead of a future M O U, um, one of the things that will have to happen is once the board and once the, you know, once the planning commission and the board approve it, the actual water infrastructure agreement, water infrastructure agreement for this project will actually have to be revised then. I think the time to really, you know, hammer out those specifics would be in that water infrastructure agreement that is required to be, you know, modified to match the existing pro, or the proposed proffers.
Well, I, I, this is a legal question. Which has more horsepower, the proffers or the water infrastructure agreement?
I'm glad I'm off the hot seat for a second.
I would say the proffers.
There you go.
But, I mean, but I'll say overall, for both of these, the water infrastructure agreement has much more detail than what the proffers do.
I, I get that. Gramularity is always a good thing, but this is so nebulous. I'm having a hard time putting my hands around it. I can't, I'm not the only one, I think.
No, no.
So, please, Ms. Sellers.
What does, what does the maintenance facility look like?
It's, um, our administration building. It's about three or four acres. Um, probably about a six to eight bay storage building. It's not huge. I mean, it's-
So it's office space and storage facilities?
Yep.
Okay. That just changes my perspective of what we're looking for.
So this is actually not the wastewater treatment plant. This is, you know, back in nineteen ninety, the plant had been there from the seventies. Back in nineteen ninety, when they needed space for utilities, we had five acres there at the wastewater treatment plant. They built the facility there. We slowly kind of added on to it. One of our goals has always been to relocate from that facility. So if there's ever a need at the wastewater treatment plant, we can move. Now we have a need at the wastewater treatment plant. And so that's why we're kind of working through the facility relocation um along with the construction of the, of the reclaimed water facility.
Okay, and at what point did we know that we were gonna need to move that maintenance facility?
We've known for about a year now. Um, that's one of the things. So we're, we're gonna be, end up making a couple of moves. One, to just make the space available that they need. Uh, we're in the process of doing that right now. And then long term, we're actually moving everything together. Uh, so we're in the process now of finding a, you know, land available for a prime location to move that facility.
And did we know that before we negotiated these proffers, I guess is my question? That we would need to move that? And did the applicant know that when they discussed this?
No, and, but we knew it by the time we got to the S T C agreement. And so that's why really the main driver of that is the S T C agreement that has most of that language in there.
And what is the S T C agreement?
Um, it is the Sa, okay, Stafford Technology Campus.
Okay.
Um, there's proffers for that. There is the resultant Water Services Agreement or Water Infrastructure Agreement. The language for them to pay for that or pay an availability fee that covers those, those costs are part of that agreement.
Okay. And so total, is it people that's gonna cost the money to move? Is it like vehicles? Is it infrastructure?
No.
What's creating this?
It, it's really, it's really, you know, acquiring a piece of property, constructing X, Y, Z number of buildings. Um, so it's really just time, but we, you know, we are able to keep the, about half the, about half the group there. Um, the other half is just storage. We're actually using the, our board. We have a compost facility there. It's not a great long-term solution, but it is a good short-term solution. So the goal really is to take that from a short-term solution, find a long-term s- solution in another location.
Other questions for staff?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. So what we're saying, this is solely a maintenance building that you're relocating. The, the, the Acquah wastewater treatment plant can handle the fluid discharge from the, the facility going to Potomac Church as well as the S T C, correct?
Yeah, it's part of that, that last one. It's not the wastewater plant. The wastewater plant's saying, it has to stay where it's at. So this is just, you know, but like I said, back in the, you know, early nineties, we had space there at the Acquah wastewater plant. Uh, we had known for a while that they were gonna have to, you know, we would have to relocate. It just became with this project, building the reclamation facility, uh, really became the project that, uh, needed that space. So now we're in the process of finding a new space and moving to it. We could keep part of the, the operation there. Uh, but I think for efficiency of operations, we have decided to move the entire facility somewhere else.
So does the county have in possession land that would be available to erect this maintenance facility?
A- and that's one of the things is, we do have a piece. We, we don't think it's opportune. So we're actually looking for a second piece right now. And that is what, so that is the, the first step that we need to make, uh, then we would build the facility.
Doesn't everything kind of hinge on that?
But we, we are, no, just because we are able to move storage, allow them to build a reclamation facility. So we're really, you know, just look, moving forward, we know what the cost of, about is going to be. Uh, we have already initiated a study that will roll into the availability fee. As part of their agreement, they have to pay that availability fee upfront, which would be probably end of this year, beginning of this year. We would then use that money to build a facility. And that's already built into one of the agreements. This will support for that entire, uh, construction activity.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I'm sorry.
I forgot what I said. Oh, sorry. Okay, so. Temporary versus permanent. So we've, we're, we're in the process of, of making space for the reclamation facility. It just leaves us in a position where we're kind of a little all over the place. Uh, part of the operation's over here, part of the operation's over there, third one over here. So what we're trying to do is recombine everything back into one location. Uh, unfortunately, none of the county parcels that we own right now, I think, will suit that need. So we are in the process of trying to find a new parcel of land. Uh, we do have a generic layout. It kind of, you know, specs what we need to do to relocate what we have. So once we find a parcel of land, we'll, you know, design what the new facility is and bid that out. The funding actually comes from not this proffers, not this water infrastructure agreement, but the water infrastructure agreement for Stafford Technology Campus. In that agreement, there is a provision that will pay us, I think, ninety to ninety-five percent of the funding for whatever we need for the, for the overall project. You know, we are gonna expand a little bit, so that part is not covered. That goes with an availability fee to connect to the reclamation facility. The way that it is worded is that they have to pay everything upfront as soon as we develop the availability fee, which would be the end of this year towards the beginning of next year. So, you know, we think by the time we find a piece of land, um, and are ready to construct, we should have that money. Should have that funding available. This is actually kind of on top of that to provide, um, relocation assistance as far as, you know, being able, helping us find property, uh, helping us, you know, maybe even construct property. If they, instead of us charging an availability fee, just want to build it, that option also becomes an, you know, becomes, uh, that becomes an option because then we have no cost incurred if they build a facility for us, so we won't have to charge the availability fee.
But, but I go back to my earlier question, that the need for the movement of the maintenance facility is driven by the improvements at the Acquah wastewater treatment plant to provide reclaimed water to A W S and STACK.
Yes.
So, all that you said about what you're looking for from A W S, I, I'm not reading it there, and that's part of my concern. Any, any other questions for staff?
Well, I, I think you've covered that for good.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Sellers. Thank you, Mr. Gooch. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the planning commission. Uh, my name is Charlie Pena, represent the applicant. And the applicant representative is here as well. Um, and I've not, I presented this last time. I don't think I need to present it again. I think Mr. Gooch has covered all the details regarding our request. Uh, I will try to clarify, uh, the confusion. I apologize for the confusion. It's not intended. Uh, but maybe I'll give you a quick overview of what the purpose here is and how the W I A, the Water Infrastructure Agreement between Amazon, the county, and the W S A, the Water Services Agreement between the county and STACK work together. And I think if, understanding that would give you a little more comfort as to how this process is going forward. So the overall purpose for this, and of course, everyone's aware of the original approval of this project, which includes five hundred and ten thousand square feet of data center space and its two buildings. First building, as you saw from Mr. Gooch, is under construction. It's anticipated to be completed by the end of this year. Um, and then the set, what we want to do is move forward with the second building sooner rather than later. And, and, and again, I'm not, um, in any way, shape, or form, uh, pointing fingers at the county or any party because this is a, in many ways, a tripartee agreement, if you will. If you think about the county, the, the developer and STACK. And this is all relatively new to the county. And there's been, you know, a lot of information, a lot of requirements, and speed has been key to get the market. And that's what we've been pushing. And it took a while to get building and construction permits to get building one up. So that has caused some natural delays in the evolution of building two. Building two is always intended to include only reused water. Now, we're financing, I say we, Amazon is financing and building the reused water system that we all want sooner rather than later, so that the applicants can get off potable water. Potable water is only there for bridging, and the capacity is available. I don't want there to be any sort of misunderstanding here. The county has that capacity. They're not giving it to us for free. And we have to pay for it. That was, that was estimated to be two hundred and seventeen thousand gallons. And there's a cap on it. You know, there's a limit on it. You can't go past thirty months after the second building being issued a C O. So it's not forever. It's not indefinite. And it does have strings attached to it. And the need in that two hundred and seventeen thousand gallons, as we move forward with greater, with, uh, more design, uh, specifications for both buildings, we're understanding that that two seventeen can actually be used for both buildings. To fully operate building one, which is why we added the additional language in the proffer amendment to ensure you that building one won't be just sitting there idle uh without being fully operational. Uh, that has many benefits. One, to us, it has many benefits to us and our customers. Two, it has benefits to you, the tax revenue that's generated from this site. Let's not forget, the anticipated revenue for just these two buildings alone is over ten million dollars annually gross. Um, we want to move faster than what's going on. So what we've done is we've come to the county and say, look, we've got capac, there's enough capacity for both buildings to have one fully operational and one partially operational. We want the additional capacity, one hundred and thirteen thousand gallons per day. And remember, this per day is not every day. It's not three hundred and sixty-five days a year. During the period of time when we need the additional water for cooling, which is this time of the year, right? It's during the summer for the most part, and that's when you hit the peak periods. For the rest of the year, for most of the rest of the year, it's not, the water usage is not even half of that amount. Likely not even quarter of that amount. So it's not an everyday usage. I want to make sure we're clear about that. And there is capacity. We don't get the additional capacity until the improvements are built at Centerport by STACK. We don't get the extra one hundred and thirteen thousand gallons, plus the, all the other two elements. Being able to demo the current site, to your previous point about relocating the maintenance facility, and then also having twenty-five percent of the, the reuse project completed. It serves us no benefit if permanent reuse is required under the proffers to not move as fast as we can on the reuse system. But it takes more than us. It take, we have to work with the county on that process as well, which is so important for the county to relocate that maintenance facility now. What we're asking to do on the Acquah Treatment Plant Facility is to expand it so they can have enough capacity to serve both the S T C site and the Amazon site. That's the whole purpose for the expansion. That utility, by the way, end of the day, once it's completed, is owned by the county. It's not owned by us. It's owned by you. You bill us to use the utility that we finance and build. Now, there is a performance agreement that allows us to claw back a percentage, ten, ten cent on a dollar on, on the infrastructure improvements. But at the end of the day, that reuse system is owned by the county. We are working with the county to relocate, uh, the maintenance facility. To me, that is a minor piece of the puzzle at the end of the day. What is important, I think, for the county, if I were the county, is how quickly can we get the approved project without impacting water capacity today and generate tax revenue as soon as we possibly can? To me, that should be the goal. And that's what we tried to do in this proffer amendment, without confusing anybody, to get there that balanced the county's concerns with what we need to do to get the market and to satisfy our customers. All within the confines of the current approvals. The additional request is tied to what S T C has to do. And, and I'm, and, and now, real quick to how they overlap and work well together. What the W S A, which is the S T C Water Agreement does, it gives an insurance policy basically to the county that what we have said we'll do in the W I A and our proffers is gonna happen on the reuse system and on the new potable water infrastructure that's gonna be built. That's the game, that's the insurance policy, is the W S A. Not in a million years am I anticipating that my client is not, and both of my clients, STACK and Amazon, are not going to satisfy their requirements on the W I A and the W S A. If they don't, they have dead projects. And they've spent billions of dollars on dead projects, and they're not gonna do that. They're incentivized to be here, desire to be here. So hopefully, that big picture, I know that Ms. Sellers has a question. Um, but I'll, in my comments at that point, and I answer any questions you may have.
I do. You, you said the S T C has improvements at Centerport. Can you remind us what those are? And it's before the first building or the second, or the second building?
So we, we, it had, we can't, the second build, what we're asking is for the second building to move forward now under the original water capacity approved of two hundred and seventeen thousand gallons. So we get building one completed, a C O is issued, it's operating. I mean, we're, we've got our contractors on site, our suppliers on site, we're staging. Why, why would we stop construction and not continue to move forward with building two? It just makes sense to do so. So we want to use that capacity, portion of that capacity, the two hundred and seventeen thousand for building two, okay? We also want to utilize until the reuse system. The reuse system is still the permanent cooling requirement. We also want to use the additional one hundred and thirteen thousand gallons for this Old Potomac Church site from the improvements that are being built by STACK under the Water Services Agreement, which is the Centerport Pump Station and the extension of, of water lines across Route One to the STACK site, which will need to be extended to Old Potomac Church, okay? That capacity is roughly five million gallons, additional capacity. Is that right?
Yeah.
At a, at a savings to the county taxpayers of over thirty million dollars. Because that's in your C I P program to build right now, to build the next two years, let's just say, not right now. So it's getting, it's coming online sooner, and it's coming online at the expense of a developer.
And does STACK have to have those in place before they get their certificate of occupancy?
You're talking about, uh, Old Potomac Church, Amazon? No.
Well, no, I'm only bringing up the S T C property um, because they said that the money coming from that is going to help pay for this maintenance facility.
Switching, so switching, so switching projects, yes.
Right.
They have to have those improvements in place before they get the first C O at S T C.
And so do we know where S T C is in development? Because we need to know that timeline in order for us to know, like, are they all lining up right now? Or are they all kind of piecemeal and we don't know where anybody is?
Um, Brian Council, Chief Engineer. So S T C is being developed very rapidly. They've got about three hundred acres cleared. Uh, they're getting pad sites now. Uh, so i- if it's all timing out pretty good, not as good as the developers would ideally want it. Uh, but for all these agreements to work out in theory, yes, they're all, it's all timing out pretty good.
Okay, so they'll be on, on pace to have those Centerport improvements done?
We're acquiring property for those projects now. That'll take about another two to three- That'll take about another two to three months. And then construction will be about a year from there to get all those potable water improvements completed.
Yeah, I mean, they're anticipating the potable water pump station and the water line associated with it to be done by early 2027. The reuse facility is slated to be online by May of 2027. So I think one of the things we're talking about is there's a very short window, as long as everything is delivered on time, where they would have to be on potable water for the second building.
I would also just note, piggybacking on that, is what staff did very well, in my opinion, and I was on the opposite side of this negotiating, is they ensured those milestones were in place for the very thing that you're talking about. Is that they do align, they do correlate together to make sure. Remember, if we don't get the reuse system in place after building two is open, we shut down in 30 months. That's $2 billion investment that could get shut down in 30 months. So it's every incentive for us to complete the reuse system.
Other questions?
Just, in this, what you're essentially looking for is access to this extra 113,000 gallons?
What we want to do is free up building two, because right now, under the proffers, I can't get a CO for building two until reuse connects to it. So what we want to do is open building two with potable water capacity of originally approved, same amount of capacity, 217, for both buildings. And then, so building two could utilize that additional capacity, but it'd only be partially open. The additional 113 allow us to be fully operational for building two. Building one, fully operational, okay? With the 217, a portion of the 217, we'll use a portion of the, building two will use a portion of 217 to open, but it'd only be a partial operation. The 113 will allow us to have full operation for building two, okay? And we can't get that until the Centerport improvements are in place, all right? And once building two CO is issued, the clock ticks. Shot clock starts at that point, and we only have 30 months to get everything completed.
Okay, so my concern in eliminating the proffer that requires the full completion of the Acquah Waste Water Treatment Plant, Level One, by May 2027, in order to give water to building two, has been replaced by a requirement that only 25% of the wastewater treatment plant improvements be done. So I guess my question to you is the same question I asked staff. If we're going to do that, we still, in my opinion, need some incentive for AWS, not STACK, which is 18 months later than the AWS deadline, to show additional progress towards completing that facility. So would you all consider breaking up that 113 into two tranches, with the second tranche being the additional 56,000, based on further improvements towards completion of that project?
When you say further improvements, what improvements are you, what percentage of improvements are you?
Well, 75%.
Yeah, so we have not had a chance to, I mean, the way it was redone to where it is now, I think, I can't speak for staff, gave them a greater comfort level on the incentivizing and progressing the project. I can't, I have to, we'd have to, you know, take another look at it to determine whether or not breaking it up that way has any sort of impact on building two. But at the end of the day, I'm not sure I understand how it further incentivizes us when the clock is already ticking for us, we have 30 months from a CO.
You talk about an insurance policy, that's our insurance policy. Taking away that proffer eliminates that insurance policy, and only guarantees us that instead of the project being completed by May of 2027, it might linger until December of 2028, again, 18 months later. To me, if you're not willing to do that, that tells me something, that you're concerned that you're not going to make it.
I don't think that's a fair comment. But if you want us not to have building two online and not have the tax revenue from it, that's the county's call, I guess, for that front.
It's a separate issue.
I mean, that's the county's call on that. It's not a separate issue.
It is a separate issue because the potable water comes from the other improvements. The reclaimed water comes from completing the Acquah Waste Water Treatment Plant. You need that reclaimed water to be able to operate your facilities, and I don't mean you personally, but AWS, for the long haul. It's in everybody's interest to get that treatment plan completed as quickly as possible. We've eliminated the incentive, in my opinion, and minimized it to 25% versus 100%. I'm asking for something else to still assure us that that treatment plant will be completed by May 2027, not December 2028.
Well, we'll certainly evaluate it, but I do take exception to the comment that somehow we're saying that we're not going to do it. They've spent a half, my client has spent a half a billion dollars in Stafford County so far. 3.2 million of that is on water infrastructure improvements. They paid their proffers before the CO, before CO was issued.
I didn't say you weren't going to do it.
Wait a minute.
All I'm saying is about time.
Let me finish. We've already paid all the proffers upfront. We've paid 1.2 million in proffers and in tax revenue. And I don't think it's fair to say that we're not going to complete our project. I think that's not fair to say.
I didn't say you weren't going to complete it, or that it's not going to be completed. My concern is the timeframe for which it's going to be completed.
And the extra water that's going to be needed in between.
I'm sorry.
And the extra water that's going to be needed in between.
Well, providing the additional water.
Which is being built by someone else, right? It's being built by STACK. And it's capacity that's available. It's not pat capacity being taken away from the county or consumers. It's capacity that's available that allows us to be fully operational, which generates more tax revenue.
Yes, Sellers.
Remind me, who's, are you guys doing the improvements to Acquah Waste Water Treatment Plant?
Yes.
So you guys will be doing those. So what would the difference between 25% completion and 100% completion look like?
75% more?
Well, I know, but it could be, but it could be like, you know, all the hard stuff is in that first 25%. I don't know what infrastructure, I don't know.
I defer to staff on how far along we are in the design stage, and how far on the Acquah Treatment Facility, you know, they're getting ready to schedule demolition or the maintenance facility. I think we're on track.
Yeah, we are, actually, the county's designing first, you know. We are designing it. We actually have to have the design done, I think it's September 20th to 2025. Then they will apply for all permits. So we're hoping probably October to November start date.
And so I guess my, it's kind of when you build a house, and they say, once you get under the roof, you know, your dates can be more, they're more secure when you're building that new house. So is that what we're talking about here? Like, what's the difference between 25%? Because I don't even know what a wastewater treatment facility looks like.
Okay. So the reason we stopped it, you know, to try to put everything in perspective, and I'm going to use like simpler units, so we're going to talk about two, three, and five. You know, they need 500,000 gallons at buildout for their site. Right now, you know, the way that the proffer is written, they get 200,000 gallons. At 25%, they can go from 200,000 to 300,000. But they still have that delta of that 200,000 gallons that they can't get to until the reuse facility is done, or is complete. So, you know, when we were reviewing the proffers, what we thought was, you know, we kind of, we didn't, you know, eliminate the carrot or eliminate the stick. We just shifted it from the occupancy of the building to total flow. And we made sure we kept the delta where they cannot finish building out their buildings until they went to reuse. So, you know, what we thought, you know, by, you know, saying that we, you know, not approved it, but, you know, recommended approval, was we had the 25% incentive, but we also left a gap there where they could not build out their buildings until everything with the reuse facility was completed.
Say that last word again, say that last word again.
So they cannot finish the construction with inside the buildings, so, or put it in.
I mean, the second building.
The second building.
Where does it say that?
That's what's in the Water Services Agreement, as far as the water that they need.
Let's, you're talking about in terms of operating. They won't be able to operate to full capacity.
Right.
That's not the same.
And so in order to operate at full capacity, which I'm sure that's what their goal is, they can't go past, you know, they can't do that until they're on reuse water.
Understood. So, hey, before you walk away, Mr. Edwards, remind us again, once the reclamation project for the Acquah, I'm not saying it that way. Once the Acquah Waste Water Treatment Plant is finished, and it provides reclaimed water, what percentage of the capacity is going to be utilized by AWS and STACK?
The goal is for, actually, they'll probably end up using somewhere between 90% to 100%.
So that whole, predominantly, or fully, that plant is going to be dedicated to AWS and STACK?
It's still open for connection by anybody else, you know, is for industrial cooling. But, you know, they do anticipate using about five of the 6 million gallons per day available. With the one caveat, as the county continues to grow, we'll get more wastewater coming to the plant, so then we can produce even more. So that, actually, that number actually will grow over time, and we should have more water available 20 years from now, as compared to right now.
Question for Mr. Payne.
Yes, sir.
You alluded to the fact that you anticipate construction of building one to be completed by the end of the year, am I correct? What's your projection on building two, how far?
Q4, 2026.
So we're looking at sometime in 2026? So theoretically.
The later part of, the later part of 2026.
Theoretically, both building one and building two could be online by the end of 2026?
Possibly, yeah. Building one for sure. Building one will be done end of this year, and fully operational, Q1, 2026. And then building two.
Is that solely construction, or is that operations?
Full operations by Q1, 2026.
Including the infrastructure, software, servers, all nine yards?
Right, exactly. And building two should be?
If infrastructure is later in the year.
I'm sorry?
If infrastructure is later in August, all 100% of those servers, August.
Right. And then building two is anticipated to be done between October, Q4, between October and end of the year, 2026.
Thank you very much.
So both should be online, fully online by 2027. So to your point, building two has still got a ways to go.
But your electric substation is also under construction, am I correct?
Right, correct.
And what percentage are you to that?
On site right now.
They should, they're going to finish in October?
October this year.
And what would you estimate building one at, what percentage now? We visited last week, and it appears to me that you've already installed some electric for construction purposes on one or two of your levels. Are you at 70%, 50%?
I'd probably punt out that probably 70%.
70%?
70% to the state.
Thank you.
Ms. Sellers?
Does the county get to approve the construction plan for the wastewater treatment facility? So we will know how things are timing out.
We're actually designing it.
Yeah, they're designing it.
Okay, so the county, and you guys are just paying for it, or you're doing the work?
We're reimbursing them for the design work, and then doing the actual construction on the infrastructure for the wastewater treatment facility.
Okay, and so the county, and is there a, something, or a clause in the contract where it comes to the board of supervisors, and they check in to say this is where we are in the construction of it? So they know if we're falling behind, essentially?
Yeah, so one of the things, so we haven't started construction, so we haven't had to start doing that. But one of the things, I believe, is in both agreements, is we have, is they are due to us periodic updates, I think it's monthly updates, of their overall construction progress. And that probably will be something that is reported back to the board as the overall construction project progress. If it's falling, you know, starting to fall behind because of weather, or whatever it may be.
Okay, so there will be some fail safes in here?
Yeah.
Where the board of supervisors.
I will just go through a summary of the highlights of the changes proposed to the plan, and after I'm done, Brian will cover the zoning ordinance. Yes, and yeah, and you've received the package, the latest versions of both, the red lines.
All right, see if anyone else.
So, the changes on plan, modified location, decided criteria, obviously clarified, the preferred location of data center proximity transmission board orders. So basically, really put a defined approximate aim to within half a mile. Outside the urban service area. That facility's ramp noise generating. And we're using building heights where adjacent to where. Step back. Modifying the sound noise section. Adding a section of what time generator. I'm trying to pull the design section, really to recommend a more specific building design. Design elements.
Water drain tanks are commonly used. Second, please, Mr. Chairman. As I stated, the proper section, based on the contract. Many specific criteria, preferred design. Modifying my, my reservation section. I was making a quick review. Recap, all my projects. They request on this, the proper condition. Building infrastructure and water use. That's what.
Also my private. So your cool section. The act of ours, the data services. Approach with water demands identified.
Here's a location of sites. The size of full structure. Zoning, P2, was presumed to be 2,000, 2,100. Proffers. And these proffers were amended in 2017. Here's the, the site has the priority. Working. The project's first long, frequently. The capacity. The second building.
Also, the fire safety, as fire safety, has a public safety section.
Here's the team, water progress. The actual management plan.
And that's construction mitigation. Construction mitigation section.
And just with quick recap, only those proffers, they would revise the proffer.
I love the summary.
For A's, for B's, for V's, to the previously stated.
Stop here, Aron.
And WIA, and establish the timing of the approval, revise that. Provide next proffer. Establish a water usage of 117,000 gallons. And then provide.
... I have been growing schools that was spending millions of dollars.
Does the current product?
That's my, it's also with access to more and saying, you know, developing as we just.
I expect paper where the center should go. It would probably be. So I hear what you're saying, but I don't think you want to screw the opinion on the basis. What's the first in line that applicant finished?
One side of the water, you know, the water. And I think they've got me around the silver. Program, sort of, or it's like, change your.
That's about two years.
I see what you're saying is creating. And I'm, I'm, I'm.
National part.
And honestly, that.
Their.
They're reportedly didn't. Yes, we have to be, they didn't know that age, right? Because I mean, when I get up one issue, but I would want to work on the board. They do that, they should have five, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Catch them when I'm. Twenty.
Get that way there for three here.
Soon we get, you know, like. Browser building.
In any event, that line.
Yeah. Joining.
Is it possible to live or buy shares?
It's not sure neighbors are on deck during the day for the projects. This is. Project. Project name has changed since time. They've all changed that to say. So this current site before, what's this normal rest? How far in their statement? See copy test. C E S T E core.
And does the compromise have.
Sixty five thirty. How is six to. Chase, what is it? Where? The interest rate.
All right, last call for public comments. I can see no one else, so I'm gonna put this. Do we have to get my team on the additional comments for the process? No.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Then we're forgetting right now.
Yeah. And are you? Um, this is more the question. Before this. We. This one wants to. She requires to. How I see the.
Not if they're.
Um, I also just wanted to. And. Here's. Sure. Wow. That remember, we go into. Ready. I think the. Um, in my. That the condition. Applicant. We.
Um, so I know we can allow them to be.
Under. This is.
Since all, there's not much more to worry than we can be more than that, right?
Yeah.
Like, how do we see because it's just a guideline, it's not something that. Said so. Is that right?
Are you doing it first?
Yeah.
You got like. I thought it was a couple of. Right, because he got one. He built it.
There she.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Give it here. So. You know, okay.
It's also. And, and, and. And, and then. You know, so.
Okay, all right. More, more.
You were right here. Thank you.
Yeah. I brought a hand.
Which was. I need. Good. Oh. Oh, yeah. Very.
That is not.
I'm doing.
I'm.
I appreciate, but yeah. Some of that's. Fair enough. I. I, I, I really want to write about. You know, the D. Yeah. This is. It's kind of like. But.
I'm. Can you do. Whatever. You. Men just. Covering. The. It's a. This last. Was like. And I'm. So. How. It's. And that's. Sure. It's.
For us, first thing I should talk about. Long. Yeah. Yeah. Um. Now. You're. The way. I, I'm. Back. They told me. I think all this. First thing we decided to talk to them about that. So. Getting around. That's only. Two more. Well.
And. You know. If you're. And then waiting for. Twice. Years. Four. One. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just. Oh, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Yeah, we really appreciate that. Well, no. I still do. Well, that's. I mean, it's not. I mean. A couple of. We're built on. Right.
Are you?
All right. No, but I got. That's. Yeah. That, that kind of. Yeah. Actually, that was not. Really. Yeah. So. They were. They were. Stuff. They did that. When they. Were. Yeah. Sorry. Right? No, no, there's not a third option. All right, so the proposed amendments. In general. Yes. Yes. Like the. Residency. No. First. Black. We can have some criteria about whether you're. Yeah. And. Your. We can now. Three little. For the. So. Everybody. So. So. Okay. The only. Uh. I was. I was. I'm just. Fishing in. But. It's. Like. So. I don't think. I don't think. I didn't want to be. And that was the same. It's not like. Three little. Prime. You can say. Right. Right. I mean. I'm not here. And if. I want. You know, we. That, that. That was true. That's. So. I. I. I'm. Now. Right. I'm looking for. For. You. Right. So. Um, revised. Yeah. I agree. Target. Yeah. Requires preservation. Then they state. Increases security at site. For. Eight. So. Most. Um. Really. Parker. First published version as. Right. Yeah. First. Established. So. I mean, then. And then. Never. Got. Yeah. Well, are you? What? Yeah. Yeah. She'll be. Right. Here. I understand it's. By close. This is. Like.
My. Same. Yeah. Plus.
Maybe. About. We have. Right. We. Press. In.
He has. Take. He.
I. Awesome. This. Being. The. Office. Yeah. Yeah. I didn't. Yeah. Yeah. See. Take care. There.
For.
Right.
Yeah. We.
Was that part yet simple? I. But I. I think. Try to say is that's something that may. In our. Be addressed without. So. Except. Yes. I don't know. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. Connect. Up. I. I. I.
It's.
Power. Here. Actually. Our. So. That. You're. And. You're. Why. I mean. That's. Where. I'm. 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 That's. Yeah. Um. I. There. There. I said. Oh, my. I'm. Really. I'm. Just. Uh. First. What is. The. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Right. You got a false. Part. Yeah.
There. So. This is. Right. I. See. Uh. In. One.
Yeah, I. I. Yeah.
And. Started. Started.
Some. That.
Yeah. Well. That's. Okay. Where. Other. You. Development. You're. In. That area. Um.
It's. There. There.
Sir. We. Remember. Was. That.
He's. Wow. Right. Right.
But. One of the others. Well. I.
Yeah.
I. The. Should. Yeah.
Yeah. That's.
We. Are. Rock. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean. Right. Well. You could be. That. Well. We.
I don't.
Yeah. Obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah. I. Sure. Yeah.
Just.
Yeah.
I mean. We're. I.
Hey, uh. And we've been doing. Getting into some. Federal. Something. Something. Especially. That. I'm. I'm a. I'm a contractor for that, so. So. I can. So. So it's not a favor. I. Yeah. Here. The. Short. For. Being. So. Will say, yeah, kind of hope I can. Say. Jump. A lot. Of. Of. Space. I said. I don't know. It's. But. I think. Pretty. So. Um. Yeah. We have. One. This. I think. So. So. I. The. Um. Certain. Right. Here. Still zoning. A military. Be. First. Back. When I was talking to you back to say. And. So. Very. So. So. Yeah. I didn't. It's. Access. For. Us. I can't. For. All of you. I'm. Right. 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 Okay. Okay. Well, I. I mean, I know that. It's. Man. When. Jitter. Out. There. Jitter. Finish. I guess. I. Uh. Or. Probably. We're. Done. Hasn't it been. Here? When I. Right. 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 So. We. Just. You. Right. 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 Yeah. It is. It's. Sometimes. I mean, look at that. They. I mean, I remember. The. Where. I'm. Able to. Somebody said. What do you. Back? Doctor. Or. Word. There. Yeah. So. It is. Somebody. Really. You. And. And. Um. So. But. You know, I mean, I guess. My. You. And. You. Um. Um. Maybe. I mean, but only if they. You. Uh. I. You know. That's. First. I kind of. So. I'd like to get into. More. So. Things like. Or. So. Like. That's.
The.
You know. That. I don't. Yeah. But. Yeah. Well, let's keep. Back. I'm. There.
Thank you. Are you ready? Are they ready? I'm.
Yeah. Who's? Four.
Hold on. There. I don't. I. Miami. Yeah. I don't. Oh. Aaron. Or. Those.
Very. Stuff. Um. Must be fully enclosed or fully. Stripped. In. In the case of rooftop. Balance. This. Is. So. I think it's. I think it's better made up. Be. Would actually. Like. Go.
Maybe.
Yeah. Well. I'm. I'm. Here, too. I mean. Carry. It's. Heavy. I'm. Hey. Forty. Oh. Your. But. Never.
I'm. Right. For. Cal. So. Yeah.
Okay. But. Say. You might have.
Yes.
And I. And I might have to say. Better. Yeah.
We. That's. Right.
Well. I still have a shit. I'm. Shit. Yeah. That's. Yeah. Yeah. I don't. More. In. This case. That. You play. Very. Simple.
Yes.
Right. Okay. Yeah. You.
How. How.
That. That's.
I just. Yeah. Yeah. I'm.
Well.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. Michael. All right. Last call in here establishes screening requirements. And. We. We.
In the version, however, that has been removed and the ultimate version with the advice that would be better screened as conference. We do have in there as F three. All right, also establishes niche analysis requirements to demonstrate the stream compliance. Establishes maximum height for building count. And maximum flight level. And I grew up in a foot camp. Establishes requirements to. 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 Establishes specific noise level limitations as maximum fifty-five DVA at the boundary of the campus. And that's regardless of what you're funding. But the three DVA reduction of prominent discrete tones. One other thing that was brought to our attention on this particular provision, and for all I know, this could be completely logical and intentional, but there are some frequency gaps when determining prominent discrete tones. The language here doesn't address frequencies between four hundred and five hundred. It doesn't address frequencies between one hundred and twenty-five and sixty. So I just want to point that out as maybe something to revisit later on. Or for a management source. I mean, all the sound experts. Establishes noise study requirements, including requirement that T C equals frequency. Establishes requirements to. 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 Right. Right. Oh, no, no, no. I'm not. No, I don't know what I meant. No. I was. I was. Really? Oh, wow. Yeah, boy.
Yes, yes. I don't think so, like four.
If I get to look at these projects, are they? Right. Yeah. Sure they're. Mine's one of my best friends. That's me. And his parents did. Oh, yeah. Well, when we come to my practice. He's. He's swearing something. He got it. So. He's. 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 Yeah, that's true. Yeah, yeah. We. We. I'm going to call the meeting. That's. We have a slight. All the work is designed to give you new. I don't say a number of six. So. For all. For. Do. How good. They're. We're ready for. About. The. I think. 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 Well, that's. Yeah, that's true. Yeah, yeah. We. We. Okay. Um. I'm going to call the meeting. That's. We have a slight. All the work is designed to give you new. I don't say a number of six. So. For all. For. Do. How good. They're. We're ready for. About. The. I think. 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 I think.
What they could have in that hundred-foot area. I know it's a report for the season.
They're going right now. They're going right now. Yeah, it's there right now. You've got a hundred feet right now. There's a hundred percent there. It's. 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 Actually, ours is. It's. 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 So, for example, all these. We're. 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 I really don't have any. Last night, I gave certificates to a school board. I really. I'm busy. And it was a concern about the fact that. We usually just begin play. We. 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 Setback standards. Um. See. About the setback of. The. 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 Um. To. Be. A. Member of the school. Eric, he's. 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 Fifty percent of the structure. The. 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 The.[825.02]
Thank you very much. Um, this is where we're getting to. Um, my duty is to fulfill the office's responsibility to do, uh, can't be still. Um, you can ask it. Um, there's a, um, there's a, um, there was, yeah. And we wouldn't. You're acceptable. Um, you're special. You didn't do your part. Um, again, I can break up the change. It's the sound so challenging for me to have a change. It's just a year ago in equivalent sound. So I just would be, uh, by our tree of land, you know, it was a long way to talk about it. It's, uh, I was like, well, to keep it all as how soon as I can, make sure some.
I think I'll do theirs. Uh, professional engineers are very broad term. And I also think that's, so the first thing is, there's no sound delay about sound. It's not, it's currently, I'm, yeah. You exactly. The word doesn't say the volume is, that's, 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 that's personal.
Um, I'm fine. Yeah. She got management's operations. It don't mean I can operate full capacity. Well, that's why. That's not the same. Um, same language every day. That's what I call this. It takes time by a professional. Two civil engineer. So, hey, I'm, 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 but I do appreciate you working with staff and that again, and that, you're proper. Um, that's, you know. Sometime in twenty-four or twenty-five. I don't want either. I'm ready for it. We're not wanting to support the, 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 our, 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 specialized cleaning compounds are also used in data centers containing a variety of bleaches and other formulations. The use of toxic, toxic with a capital, toxic, cooling and cleaning chemicals is at a specialized and industrial scale for data centers. Means it's used to a large, great extent, it's going to harm our health. It is another reason why there is a significant difference between the toxicity of a data center compared to an office building. So I would like the planning commission and the board supervisors to consider local government should require upfront disclosures on the use of cleaning and cooling chemicals at each facility, including how they will be managed, contained, and safely disposed of, while recognizing that while such environmental disclosures may seem to be, seem to be the legal domain of state environmental agencies, the planning and zoning decisions to have these chemicals stored and used on this sensitive site has huge implications for citing these facilities and protecting local residents and environments. Thank you.
Uh, next speaker I have is Lillian Swain.
I'm from the George Washington District. The Potomac Church Data Center, the original permit is for a two-building data campus. Building two is specifically mentioned as having its occupancy limited until the water reuse system is online. Now, they're asking you for an exception to this original agreement. Perhaps asking for such changes is a common practice, but does that mean it's the best decision? I say tread very carefully. The justification offered for this amended proffer is written in the very broadest terms citing the usual tax benefits of revenue collection, albeit a bit sooner than originally anticipated. More troubling, it asks permission to use potable water until reusable water is available. So the second building will be up and running a little bit sooner. As if doing the county a favor, the amended proffer states that this use of potable drinking water would be limited by the amount and by a timeframe. But I say, why do we allow our available potable water, as Mr. Payne says, to bite into the available potable water we have in Stafford County? Now, potable water scarcity is not a problem we face, and I hope we never will. But we all know that water is finite. It's a finite resource on this earth, whether it's potable, purple, reusable, whatever, in a river, in a creek, in a lake, in the ocean. I bring all this up with two points tonight. My first point I want to make is, we need to be extremely careful and thoughtful in our regulation of water use at any level, beginning now. Prior to tonight, I stood before some of your colleagues, and I advocated for an evaluative water study by a certified hydrologist or sustainable resources engineer before any data center rezonings or even water service agreements were entered into. This amended proffer request tonight from the Potomac Church Tech Center is an excellent example of why such a water study prior to development would be advisable and should be required by Stafford County Standards for Data Center Development. And number two, don't set a dangerous precedent. Your approval of this proffer tonight cracks open the door for more developers and data center companies to change the original plans for any and all data centers, ish, permit issues now and in the future. The phrase, "We'll figure it out later" should not apply, not now and not in the future. As an educator and a librarian, I got to close with a quote from a classic children's book. It begins, "If you give a mouse a cookie, he's gonna want..." Don't let developers and smart lawyers fill in those blanks, please.
Kate Hildreth.
Kate Hildreth, Hartwood. I'm here to express tonight's strong opposition to the proposed proffer amendment for Potomac Church Technology Center that would allow a massive amount of potable water use for cooling by Amazon, despite that the prior agreements clearly restricted this practice. This request isn't just a minor clarification. We just heard a lot of language that was minimizing, this is a minor change, this is a minor amendment, this is a minor piece of the puzzle. It is not a minor piece, it is a massive piece of the puzzle. It's a material and consequential change to the original proffers, terms that were specifically negotiated with the understanding that building two would not be occupied until a water reuse system came online. As we just heard, it's a dangerous precedent to do this for one developer. You open a slippery slope that others will expect this too. And it feels to me like a bait and switch that's a test to see how we respond. With sixteen data center applications on the table and counting, are we going to have this happening every time? We were told by members of the board of supervisors at Stafford would never allow a straw in the Rappahannock or one of our lakes to provide our potable water supply, but that's exactly what they're asking for here. We hear this at every board supervisor meeting, don't worry about this, we won't allow that. Point three hundred and thirty thousand gallons a day from our potable water system for up to two and a half years. They wanted to minimize that too. That's two and a half years, they kept calling it by months, but let's talk in years. That's a long time, and it's not a temporary request. If you're going to use the word temporary, then have your timeline reflect that. Finally, when you're asking for changes and they're not willing to make them, I worry because of the Charlie Munger quote, "Show me the incentive and I'll show you the outcome." If they don't want to change their incentive, they don't want to change the outcome. So I respectfully urge you to uphold the integrity of our original proffers and deny this amendment. Allowing developers to sidestep their commitment understands, uh, sorry, undermines our planning process and our public trust in it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'm going to ask if there's anybody on my left side of the ABC conference room who would like to speak on this topic. Again, it's specific to the Potomac Church Data Center proffer amendments.
I have a little something. I'll be brief. I'm Erin Zerro from Hartwood. I want to echo the same thing. I think Stafford County has been pretty clear on this. We're not interested in providing potable water to data centers, not now, not later, not at any point in the process. And I know that an important part of the planning commission's work around the new standards is how to ensure that there isn't this loophole and scope creep where we end up here. I don't know if you know this, but last Wednesday, Spotsylvania Planning Commissioner, um, excuse me, the, the board was informed that they are at capacity for their reclaimed water. So I realize that's not the issue here, but water, potable or reclaimed, and all the different ways we're coming at this problem are a constant animator of our conversation. And what just took place up here was wild, in terms of how incredibly confusing and riddled with the, you didn't know what you didn't know that's before you. So I want to encourage you, at a minimum tonight, to defer this till get greater clarity on what all of the pieces and parts of this do not proffer. Uh, long-term, I wouldn't say proffer, to allow building two, tax revenue, a few jobs, that's the justification. Let it come online when it comes online. Keep it simple. Don't let water infrastructure agreements rewrite the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on my left side? All right, seeing no one. Anybody on my right side?
Connie Vero, Rock Hill District. I, I just need to give a personal perspective of just experiencing what I just did. I haven't been in the planning commission meetings that were having this sort of back and forth. I used to work for the Government Accountability Office, legislative branch of United States Government, and the key piece is accountability. And the main point here is, who's in charge? The piece I would say here is, look for carrots, but it's really important to look for sticks. It's a sort of basic knowledge as to what you were getting at. It's never a bad thing to have iterative goals and specifics. When you have vague language, question that. If you have someone who's not willing to put another step in the process of accountability, question that. If someone only keeps talking about the revenue that's going to be driven, and it's in, but it's very specific, says gross, that's not telling you what the end revenue will be for the county. So I, I appreciated the questions, the discussion, and I seriously hope that the planning commission makes very, very clear, because these are first steps, these are precedent-setting, and what happens here in the early stages of these first few data center projects will have major implications for precedent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in the room who would like to speak?
All right, Bryce Hoag, Falmouth District. I'm sure you guys caught it as well, but Chris Edwards was alluding to the fact that the second building will not be able to come online fully because they need five hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water a day in order to operate. Data centers don't need that much all the time. They can operate on much less, they reuse that water, by Charlie Payne's own admission. He said that outside of the summer, they can operate on much less water per day. So by giving them three hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water per day, they will most likely be able to run both buildings fully operational the majority of the time. That may cut into their operations at some points, but by his own words, by Charlie's own words, they'll be able to operate fully for the majority of time. That gives them thirty months of most likely complete operation. That's my piece.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, good afternoon. Brian Driscoll, George, George Washington District. I think the only thing that I want to share is, I'm not quite sure, I, I don't have a lot of expertise in the potable water, but I know we're in a u- unique location between two rivers. A lot of our properties have high shrink swell, uh, land, so, you know, pulling water, wherever it's pulled from, is going to impact our properties at some point in time. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you, sir.
Kristen Maxson, eighteen sixteen Richmond Highway. Thank you for your consideration. How many proffer amendments has there been for Potomac Church Tech Center? Has these proffer statements given staff time to read before public hearings and votings? Have there been special meetings during snowstorm emergencies? All of this takes place according to needing time to really understand what a project is doing. Fountain Park and Water Reuse Water Plan, can Stafford afford both? Turbines pool water and changes water tables for, for local neighborhoods? The current proffer amendment two and others are missing. Page nine to eighteen is missing. See page twenty-four to thirty-three of two hundred and fifteen pages in our agenda today. Attachment May fifth, page nineteen to twenty-one is missing. That also can be seen as page fifty-five to fifty-seven of two hundred and fifteen in our agenda today. Attachment six, page eighteen and nineteen, page, also page seventy-four, seventy-five, and seventy-six is missing of two hundred and fifteen pages of our agenda today. Attachment nine, page twenty of twenty-two is empty. Page one hundred and thirty-four of, of, uh, of two hundred and fifteen in our agenda today. Vicinity Sketch Map Legend of Potomac Church Tech Center is off place showing Rouser Building and the Rappahannock Regional Jail east of Route One. Adjoining owner's page is not consistent, and there's five copies of page thirteen. This does not ensure neighbors are contacted during the length of the project. Additionally, there is no project name given upon the proffer statement in the current space given for project name. Project name has changed over the course of time, taken old out of, and the case number being changed. See page ninety-six of a hundred and two hundred and fifteen of our agenda package today. For this current project before us, what does more or less mean? How far has a statement been taken? See copy test, spell T E S T E colon on page one hundred and sixteen of two hundred and fifteen. It's digitized, so you can't search on it. How does this affect our hearing clarity? Case number, what is the case number and where? What's, what's, was stated that there's a court date in deferring the date as given, and this court date would be before that date.
Thank you, Ms. Maxson.
Thank you so much.
All right, last call for public comments on this item. All right, seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing. Would the applicant like to offer any additional comments or responses?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, other members of the planning commission, Charlie Payne, represent the applicant. Couple things. If we could have a few additional minutes to consult with your utilities team on addressing your question about how we could increase the percentages, uh, in regards to the milestones, that'd be very helpful. We're working through that right now.
Okay.
Um, I also just want to remind the planning commission and perhaps members of the community that there was a question about guaranteeing or making, ensuring that we complete these, this project. Remember, when we go in to get a grading permit, a site plan, and a construction permits, we have to post bonds for the full amount of the reuse infrastructure. So if we walked away, which we will not do, the county would have that bond that it could call and then complete the infrastructure itself if necessary. So I want to make sure everyone understood, there is an insurance policy. In addition to stack finishing it, there's also the bonds that have to be posted. So I just want to make sure, remind everybody of that as well. So if you can give us a few minutes to work through some things.
We're going to take a ten-minute recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to go. 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 I'm a contractor, so technically I'm a contractor. Yeah, I'm a contractor. I'm a contractor. So basically, I kind of operate. I don't know. 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 I probably shouldn't be. I'm not at all.
I was going to end up meeting Kristen somehow. No. Probably. I'm working over here. I'll catch it. I'll be impressed. Yeah. Me too. I do think you have a potential second career in timekeeping. Timekeeping? Thank you. I appreciate that. Oh, added to my resume. Time, maintenance. I hope that I'm talking to her, but I know it's coming. Thank you. I'm glad you're always in my dreams. Marshall, where do you need to be? Seriously. All right. What's your name? Are we waiting? I was probably, because he was very close to where I'm at. He had found things. Is it the same? I can say what I like to say. Yeah. I'm not going to. I'm not going to. I'm going to see. 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 What are your thoughts? I don't know. I don't know. I was like, we've not had nothing major. So, yeah, it was sad, though. He's given a match to somebody else. He had to go over. Instead of trying to pick that up. He gave him a small belt. So he's going to get it. He's looking forward to having this. That's responsible. He did the whole thing. So. Right. My second question is, I was to ask you, I want to get somebody to, you know, to talk to me. I'm going to see what makes it so good. I'm going to see. 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 We just had to verify the approach was easy.
We just had to verify the approach was squeezing it through. We got that on the board. It was working online right now.
This is like a big thing.
Are you on the?
Right, right. Yeah. Oh, no, no, I was. Really?
Get it out of there.
Do I get to look at these progress?
Be a lot later. Seven.
Sorry.
I know. I know. I know I'm already, I'm already regretting switching shifts. So, I'm just hoping that I am not gonna get there to a mess. Like the last two weeks.
But you're up here now.
I go up to the masses. So, it'd be okay, except I get stuck on the dump truck. It's usually a nice 30-minute, 35-minute drive. Except there's this property in Fallsdale County that has a dump truck made just west of the Turkey or whatever. The Isaac's something. They've got like 70 more of those. 75 dump trucks, like, every day. What are you doing today?
Yeah, we're gonna.
And then the fiber, that's what we're doing. The fiber being.
I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. We're gonna have a slight course change. Uh, we're gonna move up, uh, agenda item, what is now number six. I hope Amy's around. Uh, these are requests to grant time limit extensions for, I think, four different projects. Hi, Amy, I'm sorry, you weren't there.
Please recognize Amy Taylor for this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Uh, I am Amy Taylor with Planning and Zoning, and I am presenting item number six on our adjusted agenda this evening. Um, this item is a consideration for a request for a time limit extension for multiple rezoning, um, and conditional use permit applications pursuant to Stafford County Code, Sections 28-162 and 28-185. Um, as noted in the staff report, County Code does establish a time limit of 12 months for the Board to act on any zoning reclassification or conditional use permit application once they have been deemed administratively complete. Um, but they do permit time limit extensions with a request from the applicant and subject to approval of the body currently considering the application. Due to continued short staffing and high caseloads, there has been an increased need for time limit extensions recently, and staff has been unable to process applications within typical timeframes. This request specifically applies to four separate projects with a total of seven applications, including Enon Road Tech Park, which includes a rezoning reclassification for data center use and related infrastructure and accessory uses, and a comprehensive plan compliance review for placement of a public utility or facility, specifically an electric substation. The 12-month time limit for both of those applications, uh, was on July 12th, so that has passed, and the applicant has submitted a request to extend the time limit to January 12th of 2026. The next project is Checkers of Warrington Road, which is an application for a conditional use permit for a drive-through associated with a fast-food restaurant. The 12-month time limit for that application, um, was on July 19th, so that has also passed, and the applicant has submitted a request to extend that time limit to January 15th of 2026. The third project is Silverbrook Kennels, which is an application for a conditional use permit for a commercial kennel. The 12-month time limit for that application is August 6th, and the applicant has requested that the time limit be extended to February 6th, 2026. And the last project is the Stafford Freestanding ER and Imaging Center, which includes a proffer amendment, a zoning reclassification, and a conditional use permit for development of a hospital use, specifically a freestanding emergency room and medical imaging center. The 12-month time limit for all three applications is August 22nd, and the applicant has requested that the time limit be extended to February 22nd of 2026. Proposed resolution, PCR 25-13, would extend the time limit for all seven applications to the dates requested, all of which is noted in the resolution. That does conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
The only question I have is a similar one. The Board meets for the first time that they can actually do business because they're their first organizational, um, on January 20th. So, does that mean that they have to vote on it? We have to get through it? You have to vote on it during their lay-in duck session?
Commissioner Barnes, could you clarify that question again?
I'm not sure that I can, but I'll try. Couple of them are early January. The Board will not be able to vote on anything until January 20th. There's a couple of those that are before that. That means that, do they have to vote on that during their lay-in duck session, or will they get another extension? Their lay-in duck session is, because it's election year, it's what, the latter half of November and December.
If we are unable to, if staff is unable to get the application in front of the Board prior to the dates requested, they would need to request another extension, which we would either need to get to them prior to their time period when they do not act on land use issues, or it would have to go immediately after. It is our understanding from county attorney that a brief lapse in that time limit should not be problematic.
Yeah, Ms. Chair, yeah, if we get the request in advance of that time limit, we've, we've advanced it as quick as possible to the Board, the, the next Board meeting.
I just, I don't wanna force the Board into voting during their lay-in duck and have to win their bylaws.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? I've got a process question. Is this one package that we would vote on, or are they four separate actions?
It's one, one action for everything.
Can I make the motion, sir?
Yes, please.
Motion, do you approve all four?
Second.
Okay, I'm not sure who made the second.
You give it to him.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton, for making the first motion, and Mr. Bratton for the second motion, uh, to approve time extensions. Any further comments, Mr. Shelton?
No further comments.
Mr. Bratton?
No.
Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna check the roll here. Mr. Shelton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Ms. Cottle?
Yes.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
I vote, uh, yes, and Ms. Evans is out. That motion carries six with one absent. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Taylor. How about if we, how about if we move to Planning Director's Report?
I have no report for you this evening.
Yes. All righty, all right. Mr. Payne.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, other members of the Planning Commission, Charlie Payne represent the applicant. I think we've got a potential solution here for you to consider, uh, based on your milestone, uh, request, uh, to be something greater than 25%. So, I'm gonna give you a little background on, uh, how, uh, the, uh, these, the data center facilities are built out. So, you have the shell, and then you have several, uh, pods, if you will, or hubs within the shell. And each one of those pods and hubs must be issued a CO before they can open for operation. So, just the shell itself doesn't allow you to get a CO, okay? So, for example, Building One will have 10 pods, okay? Um, and it will have to get 10 different CEOs issued for each one of those pods. Building Two is gonna have 12. So, in listening to your request and the Planning Commission's request on how can we ensure a progression of reuse system construction along with our request for additional potable water until the reuse system is done, we thought we create, um, milestones in regards to when the CEOs are issued for each pod. Does that make sense? So, what we did, we broke it up in percentages just to make it easy. So, since, so think about 12 pods being in Building Two. So, what we've done, we've kept in the center port required, water has to be built out, of course, that's gotta be completed, and that's anticipated to be done in May of 2027. Does that sound right? Um, and then, of course, the demolition of the, uh, the current wastewater treatment facility site, including removal of the waste of the, um, of the maintenance building. And then, the percentages be broken as follows, as, as we were recommending. 25 percent complete, I'll read it to you. The applicant has completed, this is the third bullet now, under 4B. The applicant has completed the construction of infrastructure improvements, which is the reuse system, as follows. 25 percent completion will allow for an additional 28,000 gallons per day of the 113-gallon per day allowance. Remember, still have to have center port built, demo still has to occur, okay? 50% of the infrastructure improvements will have to be completed before we get an additional 28,000 gallons per day of the 113,000 gallon allowance. 75% of the infrastructure improvements will have to be completed before we get an additional 28,000 gallons per day, uh, of additional water, which leaves 29,000 gallons available of the 113, which we can't get until the reuse system is done. So, basically, we can't have a full build-out of our project until the reuse system is done. So, we're basically holding back three pods until the reuse system is done. You'll have 75% done up to Pod Nine of the reuse system. Does that make sense? I think that goes well above and beyond the 25% uh, in the original language, which only tied it to, um, basically, um, August 31st, 2026. Does that make sense?
Okay, I'm just kinda processing, so.
Do you want me to repeat it or walk through it again, or?
I do.
Okay.
Please, if you don't mind.
Okay, so we've kept everything in place under B, under 4B, except for, for Room Numero Three, which we changed as follows. And this is in response to Planning Commission and Chair's request that they have more, uh, control over the construction of the reuse system and when we get the additional 113,000 gallons per day of water, okay? So, think about the 113 being the overall allowance, additional allowance, and we're breaking it up as follows. That 113 is being broken up as follows. There has to be 20, in order for us to get 28,000 gallons per day of the 113, 25% of the reuse system has to be completed, okay? In order for us to get our second 28,000 gallons per day allowance of the 113, half of the reuse system has to be done. In order for us to get 75% of the allowable, uh, 113 gallons per day, which is another 28,000, 75% of the reuse system has to be completed. And we can't get our last three pods until the reuse system is in place. So, basically, we can build out 75% uh, of our project, uh, correlating with 75% of the reuse system being built.
What happens if you don't actually need all that water? If it's, you know, 17 degrees outside, you don't really need to follow that.
Well, that, remember, this is peak. This is just a peak period allowance. So, we're not gonna need all that water every day for 365 days a year. We're not gonna need it in the wintertime, right? This is only the peak allowance that the county has set aside for us in order to get during basically this time of the year, four, four months of the year.
So, you won't get that water.
I can't get that peak water.
That peak water. That's what I'm saying, is what if you don't need the peak water?
Well, I'll need it. I can't, I can't, I can't go through the year without getting it. I can't just stop operations in April, right? I'm gonna need that water through the entire year, especially when it's hot.
Okay, thank you.
And.
Thank you.
This has been put into proffer language.
Been written into proffers. Um, if it's, if it's not super clean, we can always fix it at the, at the next level, but.
Do you find that, that take a little mark up?
Yep.
From my vantage point, um, this mitigates my concern. My only issue is I think we need time for our county attorney's office to take a look at it, just to be sure they're comfortable with it. So, I appreciate greatly the, the additional changes that you're willing to make. My only other issue, and I'm not moving the goalpost, is I still have concerns about Part C and ambiguity there. And I think between you and staff, it would behoove all parties to clarify what those provisions mean, so everybody's on the same page regarding expectations.
I think the best way to answer that is, uh, it's a work in progress, and I think between now and the Board, and certainly the Planning Commission recommend that we find a solution. I can't tell you not to do that, of course, but I think between now and the Board meeting, we'll, we'll have more definitive terms in, in the proffer statement, but it's still a work in progress.
I hear what you're saying, Mr. Payne. All right, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shelton, since this is in my district, I'm gonna pass the chairmanship over to you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Abicello, since this is in your district, what is your favor with this?
Mr. Shelton, what I would like to do is defer this item until the August 27 meeting to give, uh, counsel sufficient time to review the changes that Mr. Payne proposed, and also to give, um, I'm really making my comments here, I apologize. Is there?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Open for discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shelton. I'm sorry, I kinda went ahead of myself there. Uh, again, I greatly appreciate the changes that, uh, the applicants will wanna make regarding clarification and milestones associated with the, uh, um, water, with the acquired wastewater treatment plant. Goes a long way to resolving my concern. I would just, again, like to give our council sufficient time to take a look at the language and make sure they're comfortable with it. I think it's there, but I'm not 100% certain. And I also think that it would behoove all parties to further clarify the, what is currently, in my opinion, ambiguity in Part C, both in terms of providing assistance for the temporary location and providing assistance, uh, to identify product location and securing that location. Uh, so, that's why I'm recommending a deferral at this time, and hopefully within the time period, uh, both those pieces can be pulled together, and we can be assured that this is going where we want it to go.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes?
I think I finally understand it. It doesn't sound like we got a far to go, so hopefully when we meet in August, this will be like a two-minute thing, and we can be done with it. Hopefully, uh, in August, we'll remember everything that we learned tonight, because it is very complicated and it's really hard to understand. I agree with, uh, Ms. Abicello.
Mr. Bratton, any questions?
No question.
Ms. Sellers?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will not be supporting this motion. It's time to move it to the Board of Supervisors, get off our desk. Every single time we do something and defer it, we have to republish, um, for a public hearing, we'll have to go through this all over again. This can go to the Board of Supervisors, and they can negotiate the final terms with the comments, so I will not be supporting this motion.
Ms. Condon?
I will be supporting this motion as well, um, as Chairman Abicello and Commissioner Barnes have said. The reason that I, um, wanted to defer at the last meeting was because I wanna gain the better understanding of how the projects interact, and as you see on, on that note, that's exactly what it says, and I don't feel like I have that understanding. You talk a lot about Amazon, you talk a lot about Stafford Tech, but we don't really see everything together, and so I'm having a hard time understanding that, and, um, but I do appreciate you working with staff and adding in, in that new proffer, um, as well, so.
And I hope we don't have to go through all of this.
I hope not either.
And I'm going to support the deferral. I have one question, and that is, will assist? I think you need to massage that language and make it more specific. Uh, will assist is, as we call in Falmouth, wild guess, so I won't use the other part of it. So, call for a question, all those in favor of deferral?
I think we need to do it by voice vote, so if you wanna go.
Okay. Mr. Bratton?
I don't defer. I vote against the parony.
Yea or nay?
Nay.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Four to two, it passed on the deferral.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Again, thanks to the applicant, I really appreciate the change. All right, moving on. Got a small matter here called, uh, Data Center Recommendations Regarding the Zoning Ordinance and Comprehensive Plan Changes. Mr. Zarep, who's, who's in this one?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna start, uh, one second while I bring this one up. Okay, so, yeah, I'll provide a, a little background. Okay. So, um, as you all know, May 20th, Board adopted a resolution to request the Planning Commission, um, study the existing data center regulations and provide recommended changes. They asked for this work to be provided to them, uh, by their August 19th Board meeting. Um, this is your last regular Planning Commission meeting before that, on May 28th. A special Planning Commission meeting was held as Stafford's Data Center Subcommittee meeting, and, uh, pretty soon after that, uh, from June to July, the Subcommittee met five times to, uh, go over this, this effort. Uh, at your, the Subcommittee's last meeting on July 16th, the Subcommittee, they finalized their, uh, recommendations, which includes amendments to the, um, Comprehensive Plan Guidelines for, for data centers and, um, zoning ordinance amendments, uh, specifically Section 28-39, Part Q, uh, special regulations for data centers. So, I will just, uh, go through, um, summary of the highlights of the changes proposed in the Comprehensive Plan, and, uh, after I'm done, Brian, I'll cover the zoning ordinance amendments, uh, that are, that are being proposed.
We're doing the comp plan first?
Yes. And, yeah, and you received, uh, in your package, uh, the, uh, latest versions of both. They're redlined. Comp plan, um, has its attachment to in your package. So, the changes to the comp plan, it modified location and siding criteria, clarified, uh, the preferred location, um, uh, of data centers proximate to transmission corridors that basically really further defined what proximate means, and that being within half a mile of transmission corridors, or, um, wherever the, I guess, electric, uh, the source of the, um, electricity to serve the project would be. Also reducing recommended locations outside the urban services area, uh, down from one mile to within a half mile of the urban services area. Added site design, uh, had, added a whole section on site design criteria. Added site design, added a whole section on site design criteria to provide the generally increased setbacks to incompatible uses. Those included schools, daycare, centers, parks, assisted living, and nursing homes, and residential uses. That facilities orient noise generating features away from incompatible, use those same incompatible uses, and reducing building heights where adjacent to residential with step-back provisions being considered where the farther away, the building could be higher, if it's farther away from any adjacent residential uses. Modifying the sound noise section to add other incompatible uses, of which noise impacts should be mitigated, and that would include the same schools, daycares, parks, and other uses already mentioned. And then adding the whole section about recognizing low-frequency noise and considering that and appropriately mitigating that for these projects that are being proposed. Adding a section for backup generators and incorporating mitigation measures that should be considered to minimize noise impacts and air pollution of this aspect of data center facilities. Adding to the visual impact section of the guidelines to consider use of burns where forced buffers are not present. And then additional recommendations for significant setbacks from the Rappahannock and Potomac Rivers. Modifying building design section, really to recommend more specific building facade design elements, materials and treatments to encourage aesthetically pleasing appearance of these buildings. It added a security section, which basically focused on recommending a specific recommended preferred design for these security fences. Modifying land conservation, the land conservation section to include preservation of existing mature trees as a high priority, enhance setbacks from the RPA buffers, and then also consider mitigation potential impacts to nearby wells that might be potentially impacted nearby. Also modifying facility cooling, the facility cooling section to include different elements, saying proposals should identify cooling approach with water demands identified, encouraging the use of reused water for cooling purposes, discouraging the use of potable water, groundwater, or raw surface water for cooling of these facilities. Electricity demand section was modified to encourage the use of onsite power generation. Renewable energy was identified as a preferred source, although other sources could be considered as well, and recommending documentation from the electric service provider to confirm the availability and capacity and timing to serve the project, of any given project. Also, it added a fire safety, added fire safety measures to the public safety section to require more fire safety sprinkler systems and stand pipes. And added construction mitigation, construction mitigation section to mitigate for potential roadway damage during construction. And those are, that's a high-level summary of the amendments, and you have them. If we can move forward, stop here or move forward to the ordinance?
I think, I'd like to stop and ask for comments, see if there's some changes. Yeah.
Okay, I just have one question in here. It was under Section A, land use compatibility. Data center projects subject to a zoning classification are encouraged to exceed the below standards. Why only the ones subject to a zoning classification? Because we do have some M2s in the area, I mean, wouldn't we want to see that in all of them, even by right? Is that something that we have to have in there?
Well, if a project is by right, technically it wouldn't be measured against the comprehensive plan, because rezoning would not be required.
No.
So they...
I mean, I understand what you're saying, is functionally, that's why it's there. But, you know.
And that, you know.
To me, I would rather say all of them.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt.
Okay, I mean, I don't know that it functionally has any difference, but, you know, it's a comprehensive plan. If we really want to, if we really want to put out there what we want, it's not just the ones with the zoning classifications.
So can we say data center projects are encouraged to exceed the below standards?
Can we take that, subject to a zoning classification, out?
Yes.
Okay, that's my only credit.
Ms. Sellers?
So, in the, in the attachment to the agenda, so it says it has to be within a certain distance to an urban services area, and then later on, it says, it talks about the purple line being utilized as an alternative to potable water sources, and then reuse water systems are targeted for the east side of Interstate 95. Why don't we just say we're encouraging them to be within so much of that reuse line? Can we do that? I mean, then it really says this is where it's going.
Well... Can you tell me where you are, just so...
So it's in two different areas. We have a part up in the earlier section where it says general location...
Can you tell me a page or...
Like Section B, location?
Looks like, yep, Section B. The preferred location of data centers is approximately at least half a mile, .5 miles to existing electric substations. But the one before that says the preferred location for data centers is within areas designated business and industry on the future land use map within the urban services area. Then later on in the document, we talk about the reuse line. Page seven. So facility cooling, and it looks like 1A. No, 2A. No, 3. It's 3.
5A.
Is it 5A? Okay, 5A. So if we're saying that, you know, this is it, then could we make a recommendation that we want it to be within so much distance of the reuse line? And that kind, it really pushes everything to the east side of Interstate 95, but the urban services area over there is not as large as it is to the west side, if I remember correctly.
So you're saying you want all projects, and you want us to recommend that projects be close to that reuse water system, which is basically Potomac Church and Stafford Technology Center?
Yes. I would, I would recommend, or at least throw it out there for the board to consider focusing data centers to be close to that reuse line.
Well, there are other, there are data centers that also don't rely on the water cooling. There'll be closed-loop systems, like we have two projects on the west side right now that are approved, and they're closed-loop systems.
Well, I mean, they could still bring them and say, hey, we want you to consider this, but the idea is that we really want them to be focused on using this reuse line, that we're spending all of this time learning about, and all of this energy, you know, discussing in extreme detail. And if we're gonna say we want it to be targeted to a certain location, then you put it towards that purple line and say, we want you to be here.
So I think what you're saying is, at least for two of the projects that are over at Centerport, right? Right now, the by right ones are over at Centerport. I don't think they're on reuse water.
Correct.
What would utilities say about reuse water systems on the west side of 95? Do they have any thoughts about that?
My understanding is they're focused on that, those systems being on the east side.
It seems like not just Stafford, but everywhere, they're moving away from that reuse, and they're moving away from the vast old area, because we don't have the water for it. So they're moving towards those closed loops. So it's, it's, it might be kind of a moot point, if they're not, they're not gonna, I imagine they're not gonna be building many of those anymore, because nobody's got the bar for it. Even the reuse water, we could be like Spotsylvania, they're using reuse water, and they're like, they're at complete capacity, so nobody else is gonna do it.
You know, for most of my time following board, when I was on the board, we didn't really care what Spotsylvania was doing. We were more than willing to say, we'll go to Spotsylvania. And so this is just saying, this is kind of where, and again, I don't know if that's where you want them to, but if you say it's, if you do the proximate location to that water, that purple pipe, that you say, we want them to recycle the water there, and that's where we're considering them. Everybody else has to now come out and say, we are not in a location according to your comp plan, we recognize that, and they have to mitigate it. It just says, this is where we, we want to focus on. And again, it's gonna be very small. It's basically gonna be what, from acquired wastewater treatment facility down to Eskimo Hill Road?
Krista, I'm sorry, I appreciate your standing. Yeah, that's fine, but you're gonna have to try to catch me up a little bit.
Apologies.
No worries. So Ms. Sellers is talking about a provision proposed in the comp plan on page seven, which, I'll read the whole section. Reuse water, purple pipe, should be utilized as an alternative to potable water sources. It goes on to say reuse water systems are targeted for the east side of Interstate 95. So her, her thought process is, well, we have data centers, not on the east side, but also on the west side, south side, north side, that may not be consistent with what's proposed here. So I just want to see, from a utilities perspective, what's your thoughts?
And part of the reason we put on the east side of 95, you know, we do understand that, like, and I think we went over this during, earlier in the afternoon, we're probably 90, 95% of this system is spoken for. You know, between Stafford Technology Campus and Potomac Church, a lot of that water's already gonna be reused, that's going down the east side of 95. So that really leaves us a place where maybe we have four to five buildings worth of water left. Doing the 95 crossing that we have to maintain does not make a lot of sense for us, because at some point in time, that 95 crossing is gonna get old, we're gonna have to replace it, those become very expensive. We do feel that we'll have the opportunity to use that total amount of water on the east side of 95. So that's why we kind of use that boundary as 95 as a boundary going down through there, trying to keep everything east of 95. That way, it minimizes maintenance costs for us and actually really creates a nice little corridor that we can provide reuse water for.
So would you suggest us putting something in the comprehensive plan that steers everybody towards the east side to use that purple pipe?
If, yeah, if, I mean, I think if they, yeah, if, number one, when we did the permitting, you know, we have to do our DEQ permit for our plant, the only thing we'll be permitted for is industrial cooling. So if the purpose is industrial cooling, and they want to use water for industrial cooling, then yes, I would, you know, you know, make the provision where they have to use purple pipe for industrial cooling. But I don't know if I would force data center types, if they want to be air-cooled, force that away from there. I would, you know, but I would come out and say, if you want to do industrial cooling east of 95, north of Eskimo Hill Road, yes, it should be purple pipe.
If they're doing industrial, the backup of cooling using water?
Yes, ma'am.
But if it's, but if it's the other kind, the other two closed-loop systems, still not completely understanding the separation?
Okay.
That really doesn't need to be near the, the...
Yeah, and I think they're gonna use potable water, because that's a one-time fill, or once per year. So the purity of that water is, you know, really a priority.
It's closed.
Yeah, so going from reclaimed to potable water is probably important for them.
Okay.
So my concern is less about the access to the water, but it's more in saying, this is the general location where we want to consider these types of uses. Because you have USAs in various parts of the counties, and we're gonna find it's just like this M2, where it's here, it's here, it's here, where this says, we want you guys to focus here. And what's really nice with that location, it's by a landfill, it's by the jail, it's by the penitentiary. So it's in this location where, you know, there's gonna be fewer homes than if you get onto the west side, that is just developing at such a rapid rate comparatively. And I understand there are homes off Eskimo Hill Road, that I want to meet those people who built those homes there in the last few years by, in that area. But for the most part, we are seeing just such faster growth out on the west side, in and out on Route 3, King's Highway, and this keeps it, and maybe controls the conversation. So we're not talking about a data center way out Route 3, if that makes sense. Or in Hartwood, where we're putting it right by brand-new schools that we're spending millions of dollars on, you know. That, that's my, it has less to do with access to the water and more in staying to the development community, this is where we'll consider it.
If I could pick where data center should go, it would probably be in the Centerport area, especially now that there are gonna be high transmission lines there. So I hear what you're saying, but I don't think we want to preclude it from being in other places where it may make sense, or even more sense than where they've been proposed thus far.
And I think what you're talking about is similar to what Frederick's work did, which is basically a technology overlay district, and I don't think that we've covered that or discussed that at all in this. But I mean, I see what you're saying, is create a technology overlay district, and I don't think that's anything that we've even dipped our toes into. And honestly, that, I don't think that was, the board really didn't, I don't think they really included that. And, you know, I think it's something that might be a good idea, but I would want direction from the board to do that specifically.
Yeah, and one, one thing I will say, and this is kind of, and I'll let Mike correct me if I go wrong here, but one of the things we are getting ready to do is present an update to the water sewer, and actually, now it'll be reclaimed water master plan, probably within the next six months. So I was actually working on the presentation this morning, and one of the first slides, you know, we come out and say, as the utilities department, that, you know, the planning department, the planning commission, the board supervisors, they set the comp plan, and then what we do is turn around and find a way to, you know, provide water and sewer service. You know, we might provide input to the comp plan, like, okay, we can't provide water all the way over there. But I think that, you know, that would be a good thing for us, is, you know, we can provide some boundaries on what realistically makes sense for us to provide reuse water to, and then to work around that, you know, whatever planning exercise or whatever planning is needed.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
I've got a proposed change under, on page three, under Sound and Noise, Part 1C. And I would, I would change that to say, encourage the use of state-of-the-art onsite monitoring equipment to measure noise.
State-of-the-art onsite?
Yes. I'm stealing one of Mr. Shelton's ideas from way back when. I, I also have another change, it's really not a change, it's, it's an editorial issue on page six of nine, under Land Conservation, number three. I think there's a typo there at the end, it says Area Preserve Plus Rappahannock and Potomac. I think maybe that was a placeholder. It didn't get fleshed out. It's on page six. See where it says plus?
Ah, yeah, okay.
Should we modify that? Yeah, it's just, that would be...
Wait a minute. Did we, did we, we didn't want to put that in there?
No. Was that plus?
Oh, okay, I was just saying, wait, okay. Because we're keeping the record, and then put it down.
Yeah, I'm just saying, there's...
Okay, yeah.
I think there's more to what was proposed yet. And this is more of a question, I don't know if it belongs here in the ordinance, or it's already covered. But when, when, and I guess it's for any project, if someone wants to build a structure on a parcel of land, do, are they required to consider or investigate any cultural or historical resources that might be on that site?
Not if it's just a by right development, and they're not necessarily impacting, say, wetlands, or, you know, if they don't have to go through federal approval, or like rezoning, they would not have to.
So better to bring that up under the ordinance for rezoning?
Right.
Okay. All right, I'll wait then. Does anybody else have any thoughts, ideas, recommendations, language on the comp plan? Okay, do we, do we want...
I do actually have a question. So I know we, in our last subcommittee meeting, we had talked about the word encourage, right? Since it's a comp plan, there's not much more wording we can use, is that correct?
Can't do shalls.
Like, you have to, you can't, because it's just a guideline, it's not something that is said and sewn, it's just what you should go by. Is that correct?
If it was shall, you would shall, but we can't shall.
Okay.
So it is a guide, but it can also, as an application comes in and it's reviewed, staff, the planning commission, the board can say, well, in the comp plan, it says X, would you consider a proffer that addresses X?
Okay.
And that's part of the back and forth that goes on.
Yeah, whether it says shall or should, we're gonna look at it and, and consider whether they're meeting that criteria or not. And it goes through, when we have the summary of positives and negatives, you know, we're gonna say whether it's, it's, those issues may get placed in the positive or negative piles.
Thank you.
All right, let's...
So just to reiterate, you know, we just, so for those changes, A1 on page two, we're gonna delete... A1 on page two, we're going to delete subject to rezoning classification. Page three, D, C, add in, encourage state-of-the-art onsite monitoring equipment.
Encourage the use of?
The use of. State-of-the-art onsite monitoring equipment. And... That placeholder, so basically that was to, basically rewrite that to say, this is on page six, Land Conservation, number three. So area preserve and Rappahannock River and Potomac River.
Right.
Yeah.
So Mr. Chairman, just kind of a point of maybe clarification. Page nine, paragraph M, construction mitigation. I don't know if we need that in here. If, if these data centers destroy the roads, VDOT is going to send them a bill? It's not a, in a matter of time. There is language in state code.
I, I can tell you this has been an issue for one of the existing projects, and it was in the proffers that got them to address the issue. That's why it's here. It was originally going to be in the ordinance, but we were advised it's better to put it into the, into the proffer. I'm sorry, into the comp plan, so...
Well, if there is a developer who is not mitigating their construction impacts to our roads, please tell me. We will... But that, they're supposed to do that anyway, but...
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't look like reinforce it though.
Yeah.
It helps to kind of help that, make that repair quicker, have the advocate repair it as opposed to waiting for VDOT to get to it.
Yeah, it, it may be saying something like, we need it, or somebody, we need to have on file what the condition looks like before they get to the project first, and then maybe over time so that VDOT knows, hey, this is going on. But VDOT will go and tell them to, to clean up their mess. Um, and, but it may just be they don't, if there's some sort of disagreement there.
Okay. Why don't we get to the ordinance and then we can come back and decide what's going to push the, the comp plan.
I guess you just like that was rolling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of ordinance portions. So, uh, we had a couple of late additions to the, um, to this agenda item. They were included, um, as attachments seven and eight today and reflects some final changes that we coordinated with County Attorney's Office on, on the latest language. So that is, that is included and also provided as a handout. These bullets, I'm going to try to kind of cover both versions at the same time, but feel free to stop me as we go along.
I, you, you, I'm a little confused. Are you saying they're not in the alternate version?
See, that, that is the alternate version I'm referring to.
Oh, okay. Wait, that's like, wait.
I thought that was now a new alternate.
No, no, there's, there's not a third option. Just two.
Okay.
All right, so the proposed ordinance amendments, um, in general would revise primary building setbacks, abutting residential uses or zoning from, currently it's a hundred feet to five hundred feet. We used to have some criteria about whether you're inside or outside the USA that would adjust that, but we removed that and it's purely based on adjacent uses and zoning. Uh, would establish a three-hundred-foot setback for accessory structures, parking, loading areas, drive aisles, storage records areas, subs- and substations where abutting Rappahannock or Potomac rivers or residential uses or zoning, as well as a three-hundred-foot setback. This is similar to the second bullet point, but it also applies to the primary structure if you are abutting, um, schools, assisted living facilities, nursing homes, parks, or childcare centers.
Mr. Chairman, before he leaves that.
Okay.
So is residential determined by like R1 or is it determined by, like, do we include all the ones where there's that by-right residential component?
Yes.
So A1, A8, all of those are going to be included as well?
Yes, all. As, as currently written, there would be any existing residential use or any vacant land that would allow for residential use. Um, advises buffer requirements abutting residential uses or zoning from currently as fifty feet in ordinance to two hundred feet and requires preservation of existing trees within the required upper areas. Increases security fence height from currently at seven feet to eight feet and also has a restriction against using chain link except around substations. Um, the first published version has, uh, well, this is really both versions, but there's a requirement for establishing enclosures or screening requirements around mechanical equipment. That wording got adjusted with the, um, with the alternate versions. But one thing I wanted to point out here, even with the adjusted version, is that, uh, we, we do recommend revisiting that language specifically as it relates to cooling equipment. Because you, the way I understand is with, like, closed-loop system, you, you're probably going to have a lot of units on the rooftop, which would typically be screened by like a parapet wall. But because of their need for air circulation, it might not be practical to fully enclose them. So I might want to take another look at that language for, you know, different options.
I'm a little confused now. Are you saying, again, in the adjusted version, that we need to make an additional change or it's already incorporated in the alternate version?
That, that staff recommends adjusting. Is that already in here or do we need to still do that?
It couldn't be.
No, that, that would have to be discussed and actually we'd need to come with that.
It was, but it was already in the version, version one.
Version one?
Yeah, I had language in there specifically addressing the ventilation issue.
Okay. Was that part of the exception process or...?
Yes.
Okay, but I, I think what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that's something that may, in our opinion, need to be addressed without having to go through an exception in certain situations.
Brian, I'm still not sure what you're asking us to do. Are you asking us to further amend the language in the alternate version?
The one that we have tonight?
Yes.
So, again, even if it's not an exception, it still provides an example of the alternative if there's a ventilation issue. Let's go back.
Do you have recommendation at this point for that language?
Um, I would probably add something like with, with the exception of rooftop cooling equipment that is fully screened by a parapet wall or other...
Because if there's language, it's one I, I don't want to do tonight. I don't want to have another subcommittee meeting. Have to do this all over again.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, are we all with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
We would have said they had to be on a purple line.
Is there any way, I guess, is there any way we can edit on the fly here? I don't know if we can. Can we?
Yeah, why not? We have to.
No, I'm going to just like, you know...
Yeah, I'm going to go back to, I don't know if I have the, the resolvers. I'm not sure I've printed it out. All right, so if we go back to the version that was originally posted on the website on Friday, you go back to screening and here's what it says. If the zoning administrator determines that it's not mechanically feasible to fully enclose the equipment, it must be screened by a wall or similar barrier. In addition, any equipment is referenced above that is located on the ground, if you want to change that to on the rooftop, so I'm okay with that. And any accessory electro- electrical substation must be screened from you, from abutting lots and from miles away by a visually solid wall or building. Standard does not apply to solar panels. Here's the important point. When it can be technically determined that a wall or barrier would inhibit necessarily, necessary ventilation, and again, it's not specific to rooftops or ground, with the approval of the zoning administrator, a mechanical facade that sufficiently screens the equipment may, may be authorized. Such screening may include mesh, lattice, cladding, grill work, or a combination of these methods or similar methods. Why can't we use that last sentence or sentences?
So in this scenario, it's not a, it's not a waiver or a, or a departure that's being granted by the zoning administrator. It's just another option at their discretion.
Who's going to make that choice? Who's going to determine? So I'm a developer. I say, ah, I can't do it.
Yeah.
They're just going to decide on their own that they're not going to...
So, so what I'm trying to avoid, and I may ask Lauren to chime in, but under certain criteria, the zoning administrator has to, per state code, has to follow a specific process to grant an exception to a standard. Um, so I don't want to get into that realm because it's kind of an arduous process for us and it takes, uh, I think it's twenty-one day public notice period. So I want to make sure we're avoiding...
So it's specific to the zoning administrator? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
How about the planning director?
I think Brian's idea is to build in the option depending on where the equipment's located, so then you don't have to have that exception.
But who makes that determination?
It would depend on where the, the developer can place it where they desire.
But that's the issue, because that might be the cheapest option, but they may not be the best option. That may just be a...
So, so one way to approach it would be to just simply require that it's screened, right? And that's something that staff can review at the staff level when they look at a site plan because we're going to ask for evidence that it's screened. We're not necessarily having to go to the director or the zoning administrator for an official interpretation.
We have that for things like, um, on a site plan, dump, you know, loading spaces that have to be screened, you know, things like that. So there's a process we go through.
Many things that we are screening for, that we review at the site plan level, staff, staff level.
And, and how will you make that judgment call that they're being forthright, that they truly can't provide full barrier or wall? They're just trying to get out of doing that and they just want to do some alternative?
So I don't think it necessarily should be an exception across the board because I, I completely agree with something like a generator should be fully enclosed. Or, you know, certain equipment probably makes sense to fully enclose. But when you have like rooftop mounted, air conditioners essentially, um, they may not be able, they may not be, uh, functionally possible to fully enclose.
I agree.
Yeah.
But you're giving only two examples. There, there may be a third example where, again, they're just trying to take the path of least resistance or cost effectiveness.
Could be, yeah.
And, okay, I mean, if, if we can't get there, then I, I'm okay with what you're suggesting. So how do we change the language?
And where would it go? It would obviously go under screening, which is fine.
Yes. Must be fully enclosed or fully screened, um, or, or in the case of rooftop-mounted, uh, mechanical equipment, fully screened review. Does that work?
You tell us. Does that work?
I think it's, I think it's better. It may not be perfect, but what do you think, man?
I would actually like, so can we go through this and then maybe, I think we just maybe have to take another recess and, uh,
Okay.
and go, um...
Do you want to go all the way through?
Yeah, yeah, go through and then before we do a final, come back, we'll try to figure this out.
As, as a, as a procedure, when we send this up to him and let's say that, up to the board supervisors, and let's say that we don't fix this, um, but it comes back down to us because we're going to have to do a public hearing if it, if it, if it did, the, the board says, yeah, go ahead and, and get it done. We can still, we can still massage this a little bit, correct?
Should be, unless, unless this goes to the board and the board says, um...
As-is.
As-is, vote yes or no, which I don't know that will happen in this case, but, uh, you know, that usually for a very simple...
Yeah, it seems like a minor adjustment to me.
Well, again, it depends on the language in the referral because sometimes a referral says...
Yeah, that, that, that's unknown, yeah.
Well, I agree. That, that's good for the whole thing because I've, I've got a few minor things I've already just changed and I haven't brought them up yet, so if we, we go through the whole thing and then we can do that. If that's okay with you guys, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, last bullet here establishes screening requirements from Rappahannock and Potomac rivers. That was on the original agenda version. However, that has been removed in the alternate version with the, um, advice that that would be better suited for the comprehensive plan, which we do have in there as F3 of the comp plan language. All right, also establishes Vsha analysis requirements to demonstrate screen compliance. Establishes maximum height for building-mounted light fixtures and maximum light levels, um, that would be foot candles. Establishes requirements to provide documentation from electric provider that confirms load availability and timing and power delivery. Establishes restrictions for generator use, uh, to backup or emergency use only and limits testing from Monday to Friday between nine and five. Establishes classification requirements for generators. And that is, uh, that is also removed in the alternate version, again with the advice that that's better suited for the comprehensive plan, which it is currently in there as E1. Um, establishes specific, uh, noise level limitations as maximum fifty-five DVA at the boundary of the campus, and that's regardless of what you're abutting. With a three DVA reduction for prominent discrete tones. One other thing that was brought to our attention on this particular provision, and for all I know, this could be completely logical and intentional, but there are some frequency gaps when determining prominent discrete tones. Um, the language here doesn't address frequencies between four hundred and five hundred. It doesn't address frequencies between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and sixty. So I just wanted to point that out as maybe something to revisit later on or to recommend the board revisit. And that, you know, may involve a sound expert to, to really weigh in on that. Um, I just want to point that out.
So you'll put that on a party lot for us to revisit that?
Yes, yes. Um, provises noise study requirements, including requirement that BBC or low-frequency noise be evaluated and requirement that the sound study be provided prior to reclassification approval, as well as site plan approval. Establishes requirement that a plan be submitted specifying the type of industrial cooling be utilized with any reclassification or site plan require submission of an emergency action plan and submission of a construction mitigation plan. And that's it for the ordinance.
Okay, I just have one quick comment before we, one last statement. Somebody mentioned in their, um, in their comments about that there's very, very little in here about our lighting and the lighting requirements. And I just wanted to mention that's because it's in code someplace else. There's very extensive code that is involved that we don't, that we didn't include in here because we don't have to include in here.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that that's noted. It's not that it, there's, that this is threadbare. It's just that it lives someplace else.
Correct.
Okay.
So I have a question on this thousand-foot setback that it appears may have been discussed. Why can't we say a thousand feet? Somebody said we've never cared about precedent before. They're absolutely right.
So, um, I guess I'll, I guess I'll jump in.
Thee.
We, we got information at the last subcommittee meeting, which is basically maps that showed virtually every project that's in the queue but not yet approved would no longer be viable at a thousand feet, every single, every single one of them. Well, that's basically administratively killing data centers, and that's not what the board asks us to do.
Well, are we going to, are we going to put that in there to say that's why the recommendation wasn't made? So that the board can decide that because...
Well, the board can decide to make it a mile if they want to, whether we say it or not. That's...
But we also have to talk to our board members
Yeah.
about what they are comfortable with as well, um, before we kind of started this, so...
Well, I think it should still be put forward in saying that this is... Well, I think it should still be put forward in saying that this is what the request from the community has been, and that it's not included in here, because it would essentially administratively kill all these projects.
The community is going to very much say that, and then we go to the board of supervisors.
Well, in that way, it can be shown and put in, put it on the record, and the board of supervisors can discuss it, you know? I mean, it's not just what they say to planning commissioners, you know, they're supposed to be held accountable to their voters.
So, I think that when this goes to the board of supervisors, typically there's a cover letter that kind of goes with it, I don't know, I don't know what to call a cover letter, but basically, a, a letter that explains the process and, you know, what we did and, you know, all the research we did and all the counties that we looked at, and that is something that, you know, that we could possibly mention, I mean, believe me, they're aware.
Yeah.
They absolutely, one hundred percent know.
But I think it's, it's, there's a difference between they're aware, take our word for it, and it's in writing, they, they are seeing it just as you're describing it and have to sit there and then hear other people say it. Then they can't say, well, I don't remember having that conversation, because they do a lot more than just planning and zoning. They, they do have a whole lot of things on their plate, and so it's a little different, again, when it's put in writing in front of them, and they should be making that decision.
Oh, definitely.
And, and especially since it is something that came from community input, that they should be aware that this is a concern and this is a want of the people who showed up. And so they should at least know it's there, discuss it in public, that would just be something to consider, that we should be telling the board of supervisors and they should discuss it. Again, I don't know what the precedence conversation is, but I don't remember us ever really caring when I was on the board about the precedent in other counties either. So, that's just, just my thoughts on that.
All right, I had, you had some changes you wanted to...
Okay, yeah, I've got a couple, I've got, I've got a couple. It dawned on me as I heard one of our area intelligent and articulate speakers talk about the fact that right now a hundred foot setback, we changed it to five hundred with a, a three hundred foot setback for ancillary equipment, roads, trash dumpsters, whatever, which leaves them two hundred feet to, to fit all of that in, that they're currently doing it one hundred feet. We doubled the amount of space that we gave them, that obviously they don't need, because they're doing it in a hundred feet, a hundred foot, a hundred foot buffer, which tells me that that two hundred foot vegetative buffer that hopefully is native forests left in there, we could easily expand that to three hundred feet and still leave them a hundred feet exactly as they have right now to put in all of that equipment and anything outside of the main building. Is that making sense to everybody?
That's how I understood it as well, from, from someone that's come up and talked or spoke.
I'm just trying to picture that in my head.
Okay, I actually wrote...
I'd asked staff on their expertise here.
Can you kind of go, sorry?
Okay, so we've got, right now we've got five hundred and three hundred. Five hundred of the, to the, to the border or to the, the property line of the next property from the building, from the, the main building, that's five hundred. We've got a three hundred foot setback for all ancillary equipment. That means that three hundred feet to the property line, they can't put any trash bins, storage, anything else, that's just, that's the buffer. When we have a two hundred foot vegetative forested buffer, that can easily go to three hundred, and we're still leaving them with the hundred feet that they have right now. Right now, they've got a hundred feet, because there's no, right now, we don't have any, any, um, um, gosh. We don't have any restriction on, on that hundred feet what they can put in there, they can put whatever they want in there, right up to the property line. It's just a setback to the building, so that hundred feet that they currently got, anything can go in there, except for, wait, no. What is there, there's a little bit of forested stuff in there.
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet, so they've got, they've got, um...
Fifty feet between the buffer and the building.
So, in my opinion, we, we can expand that vegetative buffer and still give them the same amount that they've got right now.
What, just what they could have in that hundred foot area between two hundred and three hundred could be stormwater management, that's what could go in. Lauren?
Yeah, you're really squeezing. I know you don't care.
But that's what they're doing right now.
They're doing it right now.
They're doing it right now in the original order.
Yeah, it's there right now, they've got a hundred feet right now, it's a hundred foot setback, and they can do anything they want in that hundred foot setback besides just the fifty foot buffer. So, they've got fifty feet right now, and, I mean, they're doing everything in, they're literally doing everything in fifty feet.
I, I guess I'm not, I'm not tracking what you're saying, you're saying they're doing everything within fifty feet. Actually, the opposite is true. At fifty feet, that's when they start, their, their project could start, so it's kind of counterintuitive what you're saying.
Okay, somebody's...
You're saying you've got basically, basically...
Let's come back to that once we...
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, is we could easily go to three hundred feet, and they still have plenty of room based on what we're doing right now.
I, I, that's not true.
That's not true?
To me, it's, to me, it's just the opposite, you've taken away capacity for them to put their buildings and other necessary infrastructure on a piece... It'd be helpful if we had like a chalkboard and we could draw it out, and I could see what you're saying, but right now, right now, it's, I'm seeing the exact opposite of what you're saying.
Maybe we misinterpreted what someone had said.
Okay, so we've got five hundred feet.
But I don't...
Okay, let's, okay, let's come back to that if we need to, I don't wanna get stuck on this, but that's, that's my first, that's my first thing, maybe, maybe we could draw something out on that. I, I really don't have many. Last night, I did sit next to a school board member at a meeting, and there was some concern about the fact that under setback standards, C, about the setback of approved schools, assisted living facilities, nursing homes, parks, or childcare centers, the, the member of the school board was very interested in seeing that schools have the same protection and the same amount of setback that residential does. So, I'm, I would recommend then changing that from three hundred to five hundred feet to give schools, assisted living facilities, nursing homes, et cetera, the same protection and the same setback as residential has. How would everybody feel about that?
I agree with that.
Where's the section?
Page two, under C, it's a...
Part one, C.
Part, yeah, one, part one, C.
Well, can we, can we clarify what we mean by school though? Because a school could be a driving school, going back to, what's the one that went to the BZI?
Something you'd need, do you wanna say public?
Public school.
Well, what about private schools? Public slash private school.
Well...
Teaching. Educational facility.
Crucible, isn't that what, is that crucible called? And a driving school. I don't care, I don't care if a data center's next to a driving school, I do care if it's next to a public school.
Yes.
So, I, do we, do public and private, is that good enough, public and private, to not necessarily include a crucible type of an activity?
We would, we would incorporate the specific terms from the zoning ordinance, so you have pub, school, and we'd make sure it's a school that, because there are other, other, those other types of schools are, are further defined.
Are you, are you good with that?
Yeah, yeah.
So, a public, all under public facility?
In general, I mean, you get, you get what my, the, the spirit of what I'm saying is, I want a five hundred for school.
But a public facility is too broad.
Is what?
A public, if you use just the term public facility, that would be too broad.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And assisted living facility...
I mean, I wouldn't care if it's next to a water tower, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think you say public school will know, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I, I would just like to put five hundred feet in there, and if you guys can word that to make it clear. Everybody, everybody do that, is that okay with you guys?
Good with me?
Um...
But she wanted that five hundred feet.
I think that's all I have.
So, sorry, if we can go back to the schools.
Okay.
So, how are we changing, are we, how are we changing one, C?
Five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet.
Instead of three hundred, five hundred.
The same, to board schools...
Public schools.
Public schools, assisted living facilities, nursing homes, and daycare centers, the same setback that residential gets. And this was, this was me talking to a school board member and the concern about it, and I agree, I just, I thought, you know what, they, they should have the same setback. Okay? I think that's, I think that's...
So, sorry, just, just for the full player, it's, it's actually more setback than...
Yes, yes, no, it's five hundred feet.
Yes, but this is including everything else as well, it's not just the primary structure, it's the parking areas, the loading areas, drive aisles, outdoor storage, et cetera.
Okay, then let's do five hundred and three hundred, like this, like, like we do with the, with the residential. I just wanna make, I wanna make an equivalent.
Let's be sure we're talking about the right thing here, because I think you're in the wrong, I think you're in the wrong section. Okay, I think you're talking about A and not C, if you're talking about the five hundred feet, okay, so...
No, I'm talking about for schools under C.
Schools are in two, and B and C, I think.
Okay.
No, primary and accessory, accessory is primary and accessory.
A probably has to be included.
Yeah, it should probably go on A, actually.
So, those uses just get shifted over into A.
Wherever you want to do it.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, wherever you wanna put it, that's, I, I'd like to see the equivalent, and by the way, it's... Make a motion, I make a motion to go past ten.
Sir, second.
Seven.
All those in favor, say aye.
Roger, we say aye, yeah.
We're gonna go to ten, oh, ten oh five then, right?
Okay.
All right, I've, I've got some changes. I think Ms. Cottle, under C, you got it in one place, assisted living facility and nursing home on one sentence, but it was not captured in the next sentence, so, or it says an approved school, then it should say assisted living facility, nursing home, and then go on and say park.
Got it.
Okay, on page four, under primary and backup power supply, where it says electric, electric provider, that, I would change that word from confirms to specifies. All right, so... It's on page four of six, I'm on the amended version or alternate version, under number seven, primary and backup power supply, prior to the approval of the zoning reclassification that goes on, and then it should say electric provider that specifies...
The load.
Okay, 'cause I don't think they're confirming anything. I think I actually have a solution to your problem with noise B, even though it's not all encompassing, at the end of where it says a hundred and twenty-five hertz, or as these, and I'll provide this to you, or as these measurements are identified in and updated by the latest version of ISO nineteen ninety-six dash two, colon, twenty seventeen, annex K. I'll give that to you. That's the authoritative source to find noise calls. On page five of six, under B, the sound study shall be prepared by, this is how I would change it, acoustical engineer or equivalent sound expert. Duly licensed.
Something I know there's...
Professional engineer? Well, professional engineer is a very broad term, so the person who's most knowledgeable about sound is an acoustical engineer.
Do you wanna say professional acoustical engineer?
I'm, I'm fine with that, did I not say professional, did I take that word out? I'm sorry. My apologies. Appreciate that catch. Same language under D, certificate signed by a professional acoustical engineer or equivalent sound expert licensed by...
Were there like four of those in Virginia?
Actually, there's quite a few.
Are there?
Yeah, in our, our subcommittee way back when, before you got on board, we were communicating with the sound, some sound experts. That's it, we are going back to outliers. Anyone else?
We haven't solved my three hundred foot buffer yet.
No, we haven't done that one, that's, that's probably gonna be the trickiest one, how about the one that you wanted to come back to?
It's probably screening from here, screening, I'm five, range five of a subcommittee.
Sorry, folks, this is how sausage is made in a sterile pitch. Can we maybe go to the point where you're, to the endpoint where you're comfortable with under screening and then go from there?
I'm just spitballing here, let's see. Including any accessory, including any equipment necessary for cooling, ventilating, or otherwise operating the facility, including power generators or other power supply equipment, must be fully enclosed unless required, I don't know if that's the best terminology, by manufacturer specifications, in which case it shall be fully screened. Is that...
Hit me up one more time with that last word.
So, so what I'm trying to get at is, you must fully enclose it unless manufacturer specifications would...
Require otherwise.
Require otherwise, in which case you would fully screen it.
Okay. Well, all right, finish that thought again, one more time. So, unless otherwise, what's the consequence?
They still need to fully screen.
Right?
They still need to fully screen, and if it's a sound issue, they still need to meet the sound thresholds at the property.
Then, then why even say unless otherwise? Right, it needs to be fully screened, period.
Fully screened, if you wanna really simplify it, that would be the way to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can't say unless, unless ventilation requirements require otherwise, and in such cases, alternatives could be approved? We can't say unless, unless ventilation requirements require otherwise, and in such cases, alternatives could be approved?
No. I think that gives us a direction.
Really, to me, that's the only reason why you wouldn't be able to fully.
Yeah, so I guess, I mean, to me, the main issues are the noise and the visuals, right?
Right.
So if you're visually screening with a wall, or even, I, I think trees is a stretch, but I'll, let's say a wall, some kind of barrier or another building, and you're also meeting our sound thresholds that we within the property line are achieving the objective, without necessarily have to have a fully enclosure of something.
Alright, let's, let's try it one more time, say what, say what it is.
So, I think going back to the very simplified version, let's see, must be fully screened.
Oh, you want to take away enclosed.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you wanted to, there'll probably be the cleanest approach, I don't know if you're comfortable with that, but.
Well, then, then again, it doesn't allow for exceptions. Well, I'm sorry, fully screened, again, we, we want it to be enclosed, we want the exceptions to be only when it can't be enclosed, because it's not feasible, right? Like the air conditioning equipment.
Well, if that's, if that's how you feel about it. But I guess the point I was trying to make is, if it's visually screened and we're meeting the sound levels, is full enclosure really that important?
It is if it's the low frequency noise, which again, we have never come to a finality on what that should look like, so, it may not be a perfect solution, but a full enclosure is going to be much better than a mesh screen.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's, you know, some level too, I feel like I need to be an architectural expert on one of these buildings to know, to know what, like, okay, it's, well, I have an exception for rooftop and not other things, I'm not, I can't really.
Well, it's not, it's, yeah, I'm not suggesting that just because a rooftop can be on the ground too, so again, looking back at the Fairfax language, they, they provided an exception for ventilation issues.
Yes.
To me, that's the only, because obviously, if you need ventilation and it's fully enclosed, you're not getting ventilation, that should be the only exception.
Right.
So how, how can we get there? How can we say it's fully?
Manufacturer specifications require by ventilation, something we can review at the staff level and not have to go to the zoning administrator for something.
Can we, can we give staff some ability to do that out and if they hit it right?
Yes, definitely.
Is that okay? You know what we want, right?
Yes, yes.
I, I have no problem with you fixing that and then, you know.
Yeah, I, I do, I need, at this hour, I need some time to.
Yeah, and I, and I go back and look at the Fairfax language, because I think there might be a solution there.
We don't have to have a special call meeting, we can say, alright, you know what we want, everybody's good with that, but then minimize that language. I'm not seeing any shaking heads here. I, I mean, I'm good with that. It, it seems like, it's an important distinction, but this, this is not a, a major shift in anything that we're doing.
Alright, now to Kristen's issue.
Yeah, I am threshold challenged, I admit that right off the bat, alright, so look, we've got a data center, we've got a property line, right now it's a hundred feet.
You're going in the wrong direction. Let's say the data center's here.
He reads from left to right.
So.
Okay, it, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, because what you're doing is you're taking, you're not, you're not, you're taking away some capacity, is, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
It's not because, it's not because today they can be fifty feet or a hundred feet, okay?
Okay, so, even if I did the other one, right now there's a data center, alright, here's a house, here's a property line, right now they have to be one hundred feet. Fifty of those feet have to be forced.
Right.
So right now, as it stands, they've got fifty feet to put everything that they need to.
Right, and what you're suggesting is moving the data center in that, in that direction.
No.
No, that's what you are suggesting, because if you put more of a buffer, then they have to move, that's why I say this is the right way to look at it. You have to move your data center in that direction, because that's the only way that that data center.
So now, if we take the how, okay, when you take the how, I feel like I'm having a girl with my husband here. We've got a property line here, we've got a data center over here, right, right now as we have it, we've got five hundred feet, there's property line, that's five hundred feet. Of that, we're going to have two hundred feet that are vegetated.
Right.
Right? That leaves them.
But there's other stuff that they.
Yes.
Can put there, and now you're saying.
I want three hundred.
You've got to move it in that direction.
I want three hundred, no, 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 there's still five hundred feet, I just want three hundred.
No, because they might, they might need, it still might push the data center in the other direction, but. Again, going back to the stormwater matter, those aren't small.
And you're gonna, well, in addition to stormwater, that area from two hundred to three hundred, there's likely going to be grading, so it's still going to be.
And how are they doing it now with, with only fifty feet?
Well, they, they'll, retaining walls, and they'll, they'll do that with retaining walls, and likely it's going to be some grading, retaining walls, and maybe a travel aisle, and other stuff is going to be in other areas further in, in the site, like stormwater.
They're giving them a lot more space right now to do the work than they can do in fifty feet.
But you're still pushing the data center back five hundred feet.
Yeah, it's five hundred foot setback.
Right.
That, that doesn't, that doesn't change. The only thing that changes is instead of two hundred feet vegetated, it's three hundred feet, which leaves them.
Two hundred feet.
Right.
Which isn't a lot.
It's more than fifty feet.
It definitely changes things on the ground, Kristen. I mean, I.
Okay, we're not.
Yeah, I'm not with you on this one. I think it's too much.
Well, you'd have to, yeah, look at a full site and how that changes, shifts the building over, and what then, how it affects.
It makes sense to you, but I don't know, does it make sense to you?
Yes.
It makes sense to me, yes.
Right, but what you're not seeing here is the data center, so it's just showing line and another project, and it's separated into segments, but it doesn't show how it affects the data center and the things that could go before the data center. The things that could go ahead of space.
The way it is currently reads as fifty, right?
They, they have to put everything.
So right now, we're giving them how much additional i- in this new.
Two hundred, we're giving them two hundred.
We're not giving them anything. You're, you're looking at it the wrong way.
There's three hundred feet buffer, I mean, a, a, a buffer which is forest, which leaves them two hundred feet.
Toward the.
Toward, yeah.
It's, the building is still five hundred feet away.
Yes.
So, I, again, I, I just, I think this is an, to change it another hundred feet would be onerous and could change other things on the ground. It's creating, in my opinion, an unintended consequence.
I, I think we're actually giving them a lot more.
I, I don't, I don't feel like you're looking at it the right way.
So my concern, if we get too nuanced in that type of language.
Which we have right now.
They're gonna, so they're gonna go on the general assembly, and we're gonna lose all the ability to change it. Because they'll, they'll look at that, and they'll say, counties are now getting into these, the mini-gritty, the nuance, and that, so if you want to extend the buffer back, just to extend the buffer back, but when you start getting into what they can do in certain areas, that's when you see them go to the general assembly, and the general assembly, if I experience size with the developing community, Democrats and Republicans, so we're just opening ourselves up to involving general assembly, if you get into that.
If that happens, I guess if that happens, I mean, we'd be visiting that time, I mean, I still, I still would like three hundred feet of forest, forested buffer between the property line and the primary building, that, that's what I'm looking for.
But you still get five hundred feet from the property line to the building. That doesn't change.
And in that, in that five hundred feet, three hundred of the trees.
So you're going eight hundred feet there.
Okay.
I, I mean, yeah, where does it end?
Just push it to a thousand.
No, and I'll push it to somewhat higher than that. Wait a minute, isn't, isn't right now the setback, the entire setback is inclusive of whatever buffer that we have?
Yes.
Okay.
And we said that, that there are certain things they can do within that setback, and now you're, you're taking away what they can do within that setback, because you're, you're further minimizing what's available in that setback.
Yes, and I am further minimizing it, because right now, they have enough.
And I, and I, and I'll go back to, what's the distance in this building? What's, what's the end to end right here?
Eighty feet.
Eighty feet, so.
They're doing everything they, every, everything between the, the tree buffer and the primary building, everything they need in fifty feet.
That's not true.
Is that, am I getting that wrong?
No, because you're looking at one project, you're looking at the Crane's Corner project, and in one section, one section, because of the way the project is laid out, there's a fifty foot buffer, but in other sections.
That's in there right now, isn't it?
In other sections, it's much further than that. It's a small slot.
Now, what's the current, what's the current tree vegetated buffer right now? It's fifty feet.
Fifty, yeah.
Right, so that's, so that's, that's, I mean, that, that at minimum leaves, you know, unless they set, unless they set back their building, they've got a hundred foot buffer and fifty feet to do everything in between that. A hundred foot setback and fifty feet in between, I'm getting setback and buffer, but I mean.
Assuming the engineering allows for it.
That's what, but that's not right now. I mean, literally, that's what, that's, that's what's in it now. But I mean, that's, isn't that in the ordinance right now?
Yes, the vegetated buffer shall be required, that says, think of a landscape strip at least fifty feet wide.
And that's in, that is inside the setback.
For sites, somebody.
Ken, you're, you're looking at it the wrong way.
That's the minimum, doesn't mean they're gonna get it, but yes, that is the.
Okay, so we, we've, we've discussed it, I'm just gonna ask, I'm gonna poll, what's your view on that, Billy?
I think we've, we've got five hundred feet setback, I think that we've set a precedent, we can get at least that, I think that's what we should be looking at. I want to agree with what Laura also said, J-Lark is going to come up, their last year's study is going to come up in January, and one of the areas they're gonna look at is, they're gonna look at all of these jurisdictions, and some of the stuff that we're, and other places have put in, they're gonna take away.
Carlos?
I'm okay with the five hundred foot.
No, but that's a separate piece, so she wants to change, she wants to.
I want to change from two hundred feet vegetated buffer to three hundred feet vegetated buffer, and we can.
I don't think it's good, let's take that away, and then the site, it's like, that three hundred, the vegetation part, it's going to be hard for X to have to do it, and I'm just gonna go with the file and feedback, and then we have to.
I, I'm looking for as much vegetation and trees that I can get in between houses and.
I got you, Kristen. Laura, where are you on this one?
I think it's best done in a proper.
What?
Best done in a proper, where you negotiate that with the developer.
Chelsea?
I agree to Kristen.
Okay, I think we're two, I'm not quite sure where Laura is, I don't think we have majority, Kristen, I'm sorry. Are there any other proposed changes?
Well, since we can't get that, can we make the, instead of the five hundred thou, five hundred setback, seven hundred and fifty setback? Since we're trying to set a precedence anyway, and if they change it, then they change it.
Okay, so, it's late.
The difference between setbacks and land use, and then getting into what you can do within these buffers and all that, that's where I've seen the general assembly be like, hmm, you guys are getting a little too.
Prescriptive.
Descriptive, and we don't like it, and they're, and, and the developers are here, I guarantee you, you're talking to everybody and running for office in Virginia, so.
And I know folks aren't gonna like me saying this, because I'm sure they prefer three or four or five hundred foot setback, we currently are proposing the most significant setback and, and buffer in the entire state, so, that's only going to provide even more scrutiny for Stafford, which has been singled out in the past, because we've gone on, from the state's perspective, off the reservation, which they changed the whole proper scheme just because of Stafford.
And then they changed.
Affecting everybody. Alright, so, we've got the comp plan, we've got the proposed ordinance, do we need to take a vote on each one separately, or can we just decide that we're gonna move it forward with the proposed changes that we talked about tonight, with the additional modifications that Stafford gave.
I just wanted to, sorry, um. Sorry. Just for the benefit of everybody here, just where, where, where things go from here, so everybody knows, so, do you, okay, this, these recommendations tonight, this will be presented, supposed to be presented to the board of supervisors at their next meeting on August nineteenth, so they will hear your recommendations, and they, as stated in the original resolution, the intention was to have potentially a joint planning commission board of supervisors work session to discuss your work, and whether that happens or not, we'll, we'll find out.
If there's a work session, we can continue with the changes.
Could be discussion about it, I guess, and it's possible, and when the board gets this on August nineteenth, their, their alter, their typical options, they could accept the recommendations as they had it, as they see it, and initiate public hearings to, to move forward, which it would immediately come back to you all for a public hearing, they could modify the recommendations that have been given and send it back and do a public hearing and say, here, now do your hearing on this, they could send it back with requesting more work, or they could actually do nothing also, they could get it and say, now we're done, so, that's, that's the end of, but yeah, you, I suppose you may want to vote on each one individually.
Okay, is there a motion to?
No.
Sir, second?
Wait, can I, can I, since I was the chair, can I make the motion? Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you so much. I'll make a motion for, you're doing the comp plan?
Yes.
Okay, can you accept the comp plan, so the, the line changes that we made this evening?
Second.
Great. Any further comments, Ms. Barnes?
I do, but it's late, so I'll skip it, I'll, I'll do this another time.
Mr. Shelton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I have an aye, so it's six, zero, with an absent to move the comp plan recommended changes to the board supervisors, is there a motion to put forward the ordinance changes, again, with the additional modifications we made tonight, and those still pending from staff?
Or she can move the.
I'm gonna give that to Ms. Barnes, and I'm then gonna give the second to.
I'm asking to approve.
Any further comments, Ms. Barnes?
Yes, okay, so, August nineteenth, this is going to the board, you guys still have some things that you want, you can raise points, please do not stop coming and advocating and advocating and advocating, you guys have been very effective, you've influenced us a lot, you've been a partner in this whole project, right, I, I really appreciate that, but now is not the time to take a break, now is the time to, to sit back, figure out what changes, you guys still want to see, you don't want the setbacks, hit the board supervisors with that, and, you know, they can still make changes, they can, they can make the changes that, you know, that you guys have, have given to us, or they can take what we have at the point, but please, you know, thank you everybody so much for coming, and, and for, and thank the staff, we're like spoiled children, sitting there, you're like, I want, and you guys are patiently explaining to us why we can't have things in the ordinance, and they have to go to the comprehensive plan, that comprehensive plan is going to become very important in the future, there's a lot of things that have to go in there, so we have to really hold future planning commissions and future boards, you know, their, their feet to the fire, because that comprehensive plan is going to be the, pretty much the only way that we're going to get the things that we want, we have, every project has to go against that, that comprehensive plan, in my opinion, is, it shouldn't be substantially in accord, it should be completely in accord with the comprehensive plan, so, thank you everybody for coming, we'll see you on the nineteenth.
Thanks, Ms. Barnes. Mr. Shelton, do you have any?
Well, I have.
I'm sorry, wait a second. Do you have anything else to say?
No, I just want to say thank you to everybody and all of your nice comments as well.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'd like to make some comments, and I apologize. I'd like to thank the board for giving us this charge to revisit the county's data center regulations, I'd also like to express my deep appreciation to everyone who helped in this process, including staff from various departments, county residents and other stakeholders who provided valuable perspectives and recommendations, and to my fellow planning commissioners. While there are four commissioners assigned to the subcommittee, and these particular members were assigned because they either served on the previous DC subcommittee and or represent the areas of the county where most of the DC projects have been proposed, every commissioner came to at least one meeting and provided their input, and I greatly appreciate that. What we collectively found over the last few months was that many localities are either. What we collectively found over the last few months was that many localities are either just now preparing, data center regulations are currently in the process of updating their regs, or recently completed their updates. For those who read the documents, they will find that the changes incorporated either in the draft ordinance or in comp plan revisions, they will find that the changes incorporated either in the draft ordinance or in the comp plan revisions, wherever it was determined that these provisions would be most permissible, they will find a lot of similarities with the recently adopted Fredericksburg technology overlay district ordinance, both in form and substance. They will also see nuggets incorporated from Loudon, Fairfax, Henrico, Spotsylvania, and other jurisdictions in the Commonwealth. Our jobs as volunteer planning commissioners is to identify potential impacts of certain land uses and provide a policy of recommendations to the governing body, the board of supervisors, that will hopefully mitigate those impacts. We tried our best in 2023 with what we knew back then, but we have learned a great deal since that time. The commission's proposals incorporate lessons learned and best practices over the past two years that we have identified. The most significant one being that the county has received far more data center proposals than originally anticipated, over three times as many. And a good number of these projects are proposed to be cited in places we hadn't expected, including nearly, near densely populated communities and adjacent to county treasures like the Rappahannock River. It is a good proposed update, if not a perfect one. Not everyone will agree with the specifics of every recommended performance standard or comprehensive plan goal and objective. Some will say it's too little, others too much. I would point out that with respect to most of the provisions, nothing incorporated into the draft that hasn't been proposed by at least one Virginia locality, again, many of which come from our immediate neighbors in the south, or which we otherwise borrowed from the data center proffers we already adopted in Stafford. I hope everyone will agree that these proposals are more informed and ultimately better than the Stafford County data center provisions in place now. No doubt there's more work to do. We look forward to the board's review and further direction, and I encourage everyone to stay involved as these documents move forward through the county's deliberative process. Alright. Thank you very much.
Did we vote?
No, we didn't, we didn't vote. Mr. Shelton?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Ms. Cottle?
Yes.
Ms. Sellers? Ms. Dr. Bratton, and I vote aye, that motion carries six zero with one absent. We only have a couple more items we can go through quickly. County attorney's report.
And no report.
No subcommittee reports, chairman's report, none, other business or TRC meetings affecting Harwood, Rockdale, and Thalmith. Those details are posted online, we have no minutes to approve, with no further business for the commission, we are hereby adjourned.